Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our final session for the budget for FY19. We have several items that we need to finish up on. Keith was good enough to provide a recap of what some of the open items are. So we'll just go down the list and then see where we are. The first one up, I guess, is the water sewer rates. Mr. Mayor, we were discussing the percentages.
I can't remember where we were.
Eight percent was the original, and we said that we should look at four and two.
Yep. What did we... Keith gave us numbers on four and two. We found the old bond proceeds to pay for all of the capital projects, all the paid good capital projects, so that pulls all of that out. Is that the current use?
Yes.
Or is that the proposed?
What we did is we looked at, we plugged in four percent, and that gave us a revenue reduction of 456,050. And if we did that, the use became 2.1.
Two, one.
Yes. So when we were, without that, we were about 1.7.
Yeah.
And so targeted use of 1.8.
Yeah. Percent, we counted right on it.
If this rain sounds like a cow.
Chewbacca.
Chewbacca?
Mr. Council President, there's something wrong with Mr. Bill.
Please silence all like 20.
I'm out of the loop on that one.
No, you missed it. That's all right. We apologize.
He was in the numbers. He was in the numbers.
Yeah, so we found about 775,000 for the reallocated proceeds to avoid any debt for the water sewer fund. And that brought us to about $80,000 of savings in our debt service for this year and years to come. You know, so it was great. Really, really helpful. And so with that, that 80,000 brought us about 80,000 under the target.
But if we cut that to four percent, the eight percent to four, it would be, it would take us to 2.1.
Right. Or we could cut it by two, whatever, if you wanted to cut it by two. Pick a number in between if you wanted to.
Wanted to remind me of what the projected fee adjustment per year by the consultant was. Is it eight, five, two, 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 two?
Right.
Okay.
And that brought us all in.
As much as we can flatten.
Hundred fifteen. No, it was likely it was two years, three years, I believe. We got back to a positive.
Cash flow.
Yeah. I think that's what it was. My memory slurs me.
You know.
We had to get it up, yeah.
We've not had positive cash flow.
I don't know if it's... I was gonna ask that, Jack, if after the budget this year, we could go back and delve from the beginning of the utility and find out, even if we can from notes or minutes, if anyone ever thought this thing. Because, you know, this is... I mean, it works, the water's on, stuff gets... But it still doesn't wanna, it comes close to evening out every once in a while, and then it bottoms out for a little while.
I think it's a balancing act in part, you know, because you never want to gouge ratepayers, you know, be careful. You know, because we're not profit oriented.
But I think that the way that this is set up, you should be able to see two years, you should be able to see two years or a year out and say, we have something coming that we're gonna have to address.
Yeah.
Either one way or the other.
So that was, okay, so that was one of you.
This is the phased approach. This is eight. And...
Five, three, two and a half, two and a half.
Eight, seven, five.
This is four. This is, this is the reduction. Eight, yeah, if we went four, seven, five, five, three, three, two and a half, two and a half, two and a half, two and a half. This was his objection.
Ever having the eight and the seven, you know, those are the things that scare me. I mean, threes and twos, it's, you know, you're like, you're sticking with consumer price index, maybe rate of inflation, you know? People expect that.
Wait, my paycheck going up?
Yeah, yeah. Oh, it's going up. That's, that's good though.
No joke. I mean, it is going up. It just gets eaten right away.
Right. On healthcare, right?
The main difference by cutting this four was in here, the funding. And you gotta remember, this is gonna save taxpayers in the future if we avoid debt. If we can fund our CIP from cash, it's gonna benefit everyone. So if we hold it at eight, we avoid a lot of debt in the future, and thus it's gonna be easier for us to hold the rates. And so he had two objectives, or two advantages of hitting it for eight this year was to reach our target of 3 million in a year 21. This results in getting there in 23 and less funding from cash, more long-term borrowing.
I like that, but just to counter that for a second, we just found a bunch of cash to take some debt expenses off of our books for not only this year, but years future. So we've helped to address that already, right?
Yeah.
A little bit.
Yeah, we made this guy forward.
Eight thousand a year, but...
Right.
Jim had asked a question, and I think I've...
He doesn't remember what it is.
No, no, about the, what would the four percent mean to the average?
Right, to the, what we say forty percent of our users are minimum users.
Correct. What would be, that was the question.
And then that is, well, a lot of, I used to think like the minimum user who lived across town had the same bill I had. But that's not necessarily true. It has to do with your usage, having spent 10 years trying to learn how to read my water bill instead of just paying it. But the, the... Well, I guess the question was, you know, four percent for a minimum user, I don't know. For me, it's four dollars, maybe four and a half dollars. But for a minimum user somewhere else.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure, I'm not sure if that is a good comparison.
Eight percent was, if I remember, sixteen dollars on the average.
No, eight percent on the, that would mean the average quarterly bill is $200, and that's higher than the average quarterly bill. I think it's like $10.
It was the way that the consultant answered the question that we gave him that seemed to be maybe confusing at first, but then made sense. But I can't remember what the answer was. The answer was, there are this many people... Is this a... Does anybody remember, Keith, when you sent that answer?
The follow-up? You can see the average quarterly bills had a couple hundred dollars, so four percent of that would be about eight dollars.
So the average quarterly bill is $200.
It's $200?
Right.
Now, let's also remember that when the consultant does this stuff, consultants always go for the highest impact. So what he's saying is, in order to reduce our future debt to the max, eight percent is what we should go with. But then you have to balance that against what the people can afford at a one shot. And that's why I think that four percent, in my mind, makes sense.
Jack, I can't see from that angle. Does that go from 207, and I just got these glasses and went back?
217, 219, 227, 233, 239.
And all the way down to the end?
Yep.
262.
2027.
2027.
From my standpoint, Mr. Council President, I can go along with, you know, where the group finds it comfortable. But at some point, a larger discussion of how, you know, in 2027, a consultant doesn't send us something that says 2036, and that says 300 some odd, because at some point, for a group of people who are using less and flushing less, we've got to, we've got to at some point over the next 15 years, at least put something in the ground that's gonna stay there for a while, that, you know, everybody can deal with the, you know, the freezing sewer pipe and stuff like that. But I will say that you, I think you're correct. I think the consultant will bid very conservatively. I think Keith will, with all due respect to him, nothing from over there on that side. But at some point, we've gotta have a discussion either as to, A, where it became apparent that it was never going to, and B, is there, outside of the standard rules that are always brought to us, how this can be, if $80,000 is found, takes care of some of the debt that's coming in some of those projects. But I think a long-term, because people, I can't see if that's the average bill. So that means that my bill by then is, if I'm about $100 less. I'm thinking about, I'm thinking about Jake's girls when they're in high school and watching everything they own three times a day.
Right.
And what happened, you know?
I think, Jim, it's about that, the other part of this presentation, I wasn't at the council meetings, I don't, at that council meeting, so I don't know what discussion, level of discussion you guys had. But when it was presented to us and we started going through it, there was the equity conversation where there is a model out there where, you know, based on income, based on things like that, you can actually moderate the base rate.
Okay.
And yes, you, you know, it's a business service. It's not, this is not, you know, like fire or police where you don't get charged for it. It's just everybody gets the service. You know, this is, you pay for what you use. But, you know, also embodied in these rates is we were, you're also paying for the maintenance of this massive system that we all have to pay into.
Which is not gonna get cheaper.
No. But, but based on equity, if you start to dial down, you know, you know, the average cost to, or the base cost to a family that is lower income, then it makes it easier on the user who's, you know, just a family in Salisbury, or an individual or a couple in Salisbury, who has, you know, is at or below some level that we set and say, you know what, at this level, you don't pay as high a base rate because, you know, we want to ensure that you have clean, safe drinking water, and we're willing to subsidize the system in other ways. Now, it may mean, you know, the higher income users are paying an increased rate over time, but, I mean...
Well, I think the other thing you gotta remember is, this is eight. These numbers are lower because we're not, we have taken care of a lot of the debt upfront.
Upfront.
So...
So we plugged in four.
Yeah.
Keith, is it possible, is it possible to plug in six, sort of twirl around, click our heels twice, and have that whole thing change and show us what it is?
Yeah. We can plug in six in the other sheet.
Okay.
I mean, so I think six is a, should be considered as an alternative. But you'd be, you can pretty much see where you'd be somewhere in between the two. So right now, our target of reaching 3 million, we arrived to our destination. You can see here, about one, two, three, four, five years out. Under the eight percent, we were in the year 21. In three years, so we might be somewhere in between, like likely in 22 in that time frame. As far as, that's one of our objectives, is to get our operating reserves to... For me, what's more important is to try to avoid debt with our improvements.
I, I totally...
More important than reaching the 3 million sooner.
I totally agree with you. But...
So we're somewhere between four and four and eight, it sounds like. Either four, you know, four, six, four or six.
Come on. Don't let me hang in here. What do you...
I would just say again, I think we need to go back and look at the beginning. I think it would be a very good exercise for us to historically look back and say, is it 1990? Is it 1993? Where is it where the cost of everything in the ground started to be more than just the cost of water sewer? I guess it was always like that. But I still think it's important to look. I'd like to also discuss, and Keith, I know there are rules about this, but the idea of taking money that we have, instead of having to sit out here and not work year after year after year after year, yet on the other side, we try, on the other side of the budget, we try to incentivize people coming in, we try all of those things. If there are infrastructure things, I mean, nobody wants to put, got new sewer pipes on some street in their, in their budget message because that's about as interesting in a photo opportunity as, you know, as watching, you know?
As soon as there's a leak in the sewage.
Exactly. As soon as there's a leak, and somebody's looking at a 12%. I know Keith is adverse to having money go back and forth, and I know its utility is supposed to stand. But at some point, we started that utility with some kind of money. So, and I'm not saying that's what we should do.
Yeah, I was trying to tell you.
That's really good.
I was studying for it like this.
That's really good. I went to, I went to Old Town Deli.
If half of us, if forty percent of us are low-end users or minimum users, it would be nice to know from the consultant where the user is like at the 75% mark, what that means. I know that what he said in his message, and I can't find the email, what he said in the message was, well, using your billing system, and, you know, after that, I started to cloud over a little bit, using your billing system, it's, we're unable to say how many people are... Does anybody else remember that email, or am I just, am I hallucinating? Wouldn't be the first time on Pac-14.
Jim, two things that, two things that I'm seeing that...
Or there on the chart.
One thing that you said, one thing I saw on the chart simultaneously. If you look at the chart, and you look at each of those scenarios, there is a projected stable rate of increase for a long period of time, you know, 2%, 2.5%, something like that. And, you know, that, again, you know, we all deal with that, and, you know, we buy a gallon of milk, whatever, gas, anything. However, it's the front-end issue. So I think this, I think we're having the right conversation about how to spread that increase a little bit. You know, even if it's in the, but another thing that Jim is saying that, that I think we've gotta talk about is this notion of, we've got funds for, and I'm not talking about general funds. And I don't, I know if you were just talking about that, or if you were talking...
In my house, you get it from under each couch cushion.
But the, the system growth funds that we've got there, the capacity funds, we don't, we don't have a capacity issue. So what would we use that for? Running pipes to some development? The developers should do that. We don't wanna run new pipes. We don't wanna, that's, it's basically an incentive for sprawl development, right? I'd rather see, you know, either the developer pay for it, or the developer pay for it ultimately through TIF. You know, I, I don't want us to, no conversation that I've had with a developer at this table in my office in two and a half years, and not once when we were, you know, when you were mayor and I was on council, was not once during that time did we ever say, yeah, we'll pay to run the pipes to you.
We'll run it out there, yeah.
No.
Well, the other thing too, is you gotta remember that part of that debt that was incurred, like you were talking about, is autopsy doing it back, was because we did, we did that.
We did.
And that created the debt. If we hold them, if we hold the people who are hooking up.
And at the same, at the same time, and Mr. Moles was very funny in his reply to us, no, there's nothing on this spreadsheet that could possibly not be funded. And I was like, well, there's only really one part of the budget that I'll buy that from, and it is this part of the budget. You know what I mean? Everybody else, you know, everybody comes in with their wish list. They put it all on there, and then they hope it doesn't get moved back one year, and then the next year, it doesn't get moved back another year. I mean, that's, but if you look at his, is there any place? Is there even, I mean, granted, it'd be bonded probably, and that would only generate a wee bit of money.
We spread a couple things on this basis, yeah.
Okay.
You know, we didn't have a lot of time to do that because the consultant's report came in right before budget had to be finalized. But yeah, we, there was a little, there was a little bit of that, and things that were stacked up in 19 that we spread out over 20, 21, 22, 23.
Mr. Council President, are you looking for someone at the table to say, heck, 19, five, 20, five, 21, five, 22, three? Are you looking for someone to do that? Is that, is that where we're headed?
I, where we're headed is...
We gotta figure out what...
Four, four, or six.
Okay.
I think we all said eight is, eight is out of the question, correct?
Yeah.
Well, only if the following year is one. I guess it's how we get there.
And that's, that's the thing. I mean, you have two choices. We can slam it and then move quicker towards the debt reduction and positive flow, or we can spread it and have more consideration for the citizens.
All right. Well, Keith, then can I ask this question? When we do get there, this is what I'm afraid will happen. I'm afraid someone will come to the mayor with their budget thing and go, ah, which happens every year. So though I'll probably get to do a 20, this is 19, I'll probably get to do a 20 budget and maybe a 21 budget, I'm not sure. But there has to be some sort of guarantee to the elected officials from staff that if we do this, barring any, you know, someone blew a hole in a large sewer pipe on some street that feeds everybody in the city, that there has to be some sort of guarantee to us, that within your best estimate and your best professional knowledge, that we're not, that the people who sit out here aren't gonna hear this same, and I'll be honest with you, from my perspective, after almost 14 years of reading these things, it does become a bit much every year that it's, the sky is falling. And every year, you push and prod, as you should, as the chief financial officer, the elected officials, to sort of get where they need to be, but then the next year, it's a pushing prod again, and it's, I know you're looking at the mayor, but you do the same thing to him. I know that.
Well, Keith though.
Well, Keith doesn't do it.
It's not Keith.
It's, it's, it's... For me, it was Shawanda. They sent Shawanda there during those years to do it to me.
I feel your pain. By the same token, things are gonna happen.
True.
And it's our accountability to make sure that we do, we make the best decision that we possibly can, given all the information we have.
True.
You know how I feel about debt.
I know. I know.
I mean, I'm nuts about debt.
If something big came up, Jack, though, wouldn't the department head go to Julia, and Julia through the mayor, and then to us and say, this is an emergency procurement, and it's probably gonna come out of surplus anyway?
Yeah, I think the big question from my perspective, from where I'm sitting, is just that we need, whether it's a plan that starts with four and four, and then three, two, four, or four, 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 and then, you know, two, two. You know, whatever the plan is, that it doesn't shortchange us in a major way that we hear two years from now, and this is what you're saying, that we hear, oh, if only we had done eight percent then. But now if we do eight percent increase this year, we'll be... You know, we wanna avoid that. We want a real solid plan for, you know, for the, at least the length of term of the analysis that these consultants have done.
Well, Mr., I can go, I can go five percent for the next five years. If that's a starting point, if we wanna go, I can, I can shift a little bit with what my colleagues say, but if we need a starting point, I can go five percent for the next five years.
All right. Just give me a number. Give me a number.
A number? I'm comfortable with five. I'm on the same page as you where I dislike the idea of debt and just paying four interest over an extended period of time. And, and you know, my personal finances, I'll take a hit today, so I'll be free tomorrow, you know?
There's an inspirational song here.
I agree. I agree. I just don't want, yeah, five. I just don't wanna hurt the customer.
I can't believe that I'm sitting here going the other way.
Are you...
Are you?
I'm just...
You'd like to get it done?
No.
Oh, you went lower. I wasn't sure which way.
No.
I, you know, I think when you look at the, there's, there's the part where, you know, we're worried about today increasing it on our rate users because this would be the third year in a row that we've sat here and increased water sewer rates. But there's the understanding of the big picture. Like, Jack, you know, the debt is a big concern. I mean, we can, what we're doing is gonna be shifting some of this stuff to debt service, which down the road is gonna cause higher, higher...
Interest rates.
Higher interest rates, which is gonna make the water sewer rates higher.
And I think what I'm hearing...
So if you look at the graph where, you know, we have it low this time, you know, in 10 years, it's, the rates are higher. If we do as much as we can upfront, you know, I think that makes those rates go down five, six, seven, 10 years down the road. Because we're not, we're not encumbering more debt. I think that, that's the concern that I have.
And Keith, if you could pull this up, this would be helpful to me because I'm not gonna mince words with you. You gotta sell this, you know, when you're grocery shopping. So my question is, is if we could go back to the water and sewer rate chart that showed us what the other cities were doing, it would be very helpful for me, and I'm not gonna lie to you. Look right at somebody in the grocery store that's still lowering. I mean, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna say it straight up, you know?
Significantly.
So, thank you. Remind me to say that. But in terms of if competitive, if water and sewer rates make us competitive or not, and I'm not sure whether or not place makes us the most competitive of all, because this is, again, these, these rates are considerably lower than anywhere on the East Coast. And even if we had the highest rates, our property taxes on the East Coast are so much lower than most. So I, that line, and I can, I can shut down in the grocery store. It's just...
But then there's all the case studies of cities that didn't maintain their water.
Exactly.
And it becomes a major issue when you have an entire generation of people that are...
Have brown clothes?
I teach.
Yeah, let's go with the clothes.
No, not brown, yeah.
Yeah, let's go with the clothes, not the real bad stuff.
But you know, it's water. This is what creates civilization. Where is the water? Is the water good? I mean, at the same time, we have that balancing act where we don't wanna be so nervous about water that we're throwing too much money at it. But it looks like we have a reason here with the debt outstanding.
I was filming a Keurig pod this morning going, I'm going to figure out how much this is costing me this morning. So we were all at five, and Mr. Council President, you wanna go a little lower?
No. This is like, this is like reverse. I can't...
Reverse.
What are you, what are you...
I'm gonna say four.
Four, yeah.
But, but, you know, my favorite expression, as you know, is pay me now, pay me later.
Three.
Yeah.
But that's what we're dealing with.
Fighting with myself.
Is that four this year, or four across from the next five?
No, it's five. I could do five now, and then, I wanna see what happens.
I would do two.
I wanna see what happens.
How do we, can we do that, Keith?
Yeah, we're just choosing this year, and we'll...
To see how...
But I'm saying, we can, we can blow it out once we get this.
Okay.
Partly, they're still experiencing the real cost of the new plant. They have not, got to see what the electricity is gonna be exactly. So right now, they're working with estimates from engineers. So Mike has...
Could you do me a favor then, please? And I say this, Mr. President, you just need to begabble me, go ahead. But I've been listening to how much that electricity was gonna cost that new plant for the last seven years. Let's get on it. Let's get on it. I mean, seriously. And it's kept us from making decisions and, oh, you know, everybody's sitting there waiting for the shoe drop. Let's go. Just, I know, I know. Just, you know, all this discussion about what to do, you know, when the, when the new plant goes online, because it'll work so much better. But then we may negate everything we get because of the cost of the electricity.
But it'll work better. It's not cheaper.
Thanks, well, amen. I just, if we could get to... Tombe Talas. I know, it just came on. Tombe Talas, I know, it just came on, it's been on for what, when did we flip the switch, two months ago?
Uh, November, end of November, December one, December one.
So we've got, coming up on six months, can we do like I do, multiply that by two and get a general idea, is it gonna be more in the summer?
I think, I think our budget is on the, you know, I think our budget's accurate on the, um, electric. You know, the, the other question that's gonna come up here soon is at some point, it's going to again be cheaper to do, um. A net meter or behind the meter, um, solar or something like that, at some point that's gonna happen, cause the electric rates. Net, you know, which had plummeted and electric was cheap, so all of a sudden it made no sense to do solar. Now it's getting more expensive, so guess what's gonna happen, it's gonna make sense to do solar.
We gotta send that lady out to that little house. Yes, we, we have to send those people out to that little house on Everton Drive.
The day of the river, pardon, the ribbon cutting, the day at the ribbon cutting, we talked about. We're looking over and pointing.
There's this huge piece of property, and on, even on. City property, we have, uh, we have land, which I think was discussed a long time ago, right?
Yeah.
As a potential location to do solar.
Alright, let's, let's put this to bed, what do I wanna do? It sounds like we have consensus for five.
Can we, if we give Keith the five over five years, can we walk out of here and have him come back and have that, what that will do to the chart?
That was from the consultant.
From the consultant, he's gotta get, he's gotta get them, we don't own that, we don't. He had to go to them and get the thing last time, which he can do again.
It takes about ten minutes, I mean, if he's there, it'd only take about ten minutes for.
And you can't do it in your head?
No, no, that's a. Twenty-two, it's gonna be in between, uh, twenty-three and twenty, twenty-one, so we kinda, we kinda know.
We know.
It's gonna be a little short.
Can you put that slide back up?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
My guess would be right in here somewhere.
Congressman Eric, and you did mention something about, you know, a tiered system or some sort of. Um, but, you know, and the mayor brought it up too, some reduction for the lower end user or socioeconomic. If we start with five, instead of, and let's say four is the real number, four percent. But that gives you some wiggle room at that five percent to be able to do some adjustments down and still yield the same amount of money. If you wanna give some incentives or breaks to lower end users or lower economic end.
I, I'm not math, Keith, but if you go four and seven is eleven, and five is fifteen point five. Then your average over the three years is five anyway.
Let's see, what's happening, if you put five in there, your debt's going down, so that number's gonna be, that number could be lower.
Well then, would you prefer that I made a motion to do nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one at five?
No, 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 no.
Well, we can't set next year.
We can't set next year, next year, but I, if we do five, we know two things are gonna happen, one is, the debt's gonna be affected. In a positive way, and we know that it will establish a, a baseline, so that with, next year when we go into it. We can see what the impact was, and then we can make a decision next year.
So for the typical user, at five percent, do we know how much their bill is gonna go up, is gonna go up?
Uh, about ten dollars, about ten dollars.
About ten dollars, so that's an additional forty dollars per year that they.
Forty dollars per year.
That's, that's.
You okay?
I'm comfortable with that.
Alright, we have, it looks like we have consensus then, so we're looking at five percent. I have to try to sleep, that's, I mean, I can't believe it, I was just fighting the other side of it. It's okay, that's why we do this. Alright, so we're looking at five. Uh, someone's gonna have to lead the healthcare discussion.
Six, isn't it?
Genie, or do you, do you wanna take it?
Well, I can introduce firstly that the, um, ten percent estimate that Care First brought to us. Was reduced by a formulary program that, um. We were able to get approval from, uh, the Wacomco board that had got it down to eight, we negotiated from eight to six, so six is what we plugged in. In the mayor level and we brought to you, to everyone, so we, it, it held, we were concerned that it might not hold, so that's, that was great news.
That's good news.
Um, and in addition, we did, we did run some numbers, uh, Julie, do we wanna introduce the, uh, estimates on the PPO?
Uh, yeah.
And, would it be? Uh, so, pull up those numbers.
Is that in your email on the fourth?
Yes.
So we sent out an email?
Yeah, I sent out, uh, Julie's email.
Haven't seen that in about eighteen years.
Here's the memo that everyone got.
Right.
Yeah, so I think the, the gist of it is, the PPO coverage that we offer that about a hundred and seventy-five employees. Or retired persons take advantage of, um, is, because Blue Cross, Blue Shield is so. Deep in every market, um, there isn't really a need to go out of market, because you can almost get Blue Cross, Blue Shield everywhere. And the difference in cost, um, for us to cover, um, our portion of staff that have PPO is, is very expensive. Um, and if we were to continue to offer PPO, if folks wanna take advantage of that. Um, I, I take, I have PPO, but I didn't really realize that I didn't need it because EPO is everywhere. Or I can take advantage of Blue Cross, cause it's everywhere, um, so if we, the proposal that, that G- um. Genie is sort of, and Keith have come up with is, um, still offer PPO. But we wouldn't, we wouldn't pay any more than what we pay for the EPO for our portion, the employee would have to pick up the rest of that. Um, which would have a savings of about, uh, total, Keith, what was that?
One seventy-five.
One seventy-five, um.
How many, how many, I know the changes, how many people are currently in PPO, do we know?
I think it's about a hundred, hundred and seventy-five?
Hundred and seventy-three.
Hundred and seventy-three.
It's about a thousand dollars a person on average.
So if we, if we did that. And we change, what's the delta per person?
For the, for the individual?
Individual, it's a thousand?
Yeah, yeah, hundred and seventy-five savings and then hundred and seventy-three people, so just over a thousand dollars.
If a person stays on the PPO and the benefit is reduced, it's gonna cost that person about nine hundred and sixty dollars a year.
Have we educated? The, like you said, I didn't know, have we educated, cause you probably would have people dropping to the regular by, on their own.
We could, we could do a better job, I think.
Okay.
What I know, cause I personally went through it, is the vastness, it keeps getting, the EPO options keep expanding. And people who might have jumped in years ago with PPO just haven't thought about it, the coverage, Blue Cross is continually expanding. Unless you're going to see a witch doctor, you're pretty much recovered, honestly, I mean, it's, it's, uh, I mean. Cause our family goes and sees specialists across the bridge, we have a lot of different things, and it's all covered, it's all in-house, so it's a, it's a vast. Um, and people can actually individually on their website go and click and see if your doctor's in coverage, so people can make that decision. Uh, which is really easy.
Here's my issue, my personal issue, my personal issue is, I don't like to change something. On people who are getting the benefit, because that's what they assumed they were getting when they took the job. I have no issue with it on a full, ongoing basis for new employees, that doesn't resolve the issue. In other words, that we're leaving, if you look at it that way, we're leaving a potential hundred and seventy-three thousand. On the table, however, if we do an education thing and tied in with that. We may by, just by people saying, wait a minute, why am I painting this anyway if I'm cut, if I've got Blue Cross and we're, and we're covered pretty much all over the place. So, that's my opinion, I don't know if anybody else has an opinion about changing it.
What we've done in the past, I think, is save for new hires.
That's, that's my point, that's exactly correct.
Would not be available.
We did that with.
I agree with, with, with Andy, but then I'm worried that Kim comes in and says. This is what I know about the pyramid, that, that, that Blue Cross, Blue Shield comes in with. This seventy-three percent increase in specialty drugs could literally be one person. The entire time that I was mayor, there was one spouse of an employee here that blew up everything. My argument to Blue Cross, Blue Shield was, well, why do you call it insurance then, it's not insurance against anything. If one person, and you couldn't say to that person, I'm sorry, your, your spouse can't have. Um, but the que, what I'm worried about is that one person ends up needing something from the PPO. That we, that we would no longer offer if we took it away from everybody, it'd be that one specialty that's outside. Is, could we still offer them the PPO?
It's, there's pay more, about a hundred dollars more a month.
So they wouldn't know, so you're hoping if it's something as special, specialty drugs, that someone would know they need. You know, they would know they need to do this, but if EPO is taking care of everything from podiatry or allergies or. Even cancer, you know, things that, that you do have to go across the bridge for or to DuPont for, things like that, then. It doesn't save us now, Keith, to just make it EPO from now on to new employees, I mean, I'm sure it does in your spreadsheet. In two thousand twenty-seven, much like the water, the water spreadsheet, but.
We put it on the plane, plane, I don't know if it's, we're taking out the PPO, or just saying, we're not, we're covering up to the EPO level, so. If I pay a hundred and fifty dollars a month for a family, PPO is two fifty a month, but that may turn into three fifty a month, so.
There'd be no way anybody could do that, especially if you were somebody who worked in public works, especially if you were somebody who was a, a staffs.
Yeah, they might, they might price them out of it.
Roughly eighty dollars more a month.
Yeah.
Other thoughts? I, I have this sheet I could send out, it, that has the detail of the, uh, coverage is all blown up. This is what, uh, describes in detail the difference in coverage.
Keith, does it also show, so we were talking about the formulary too, and the exchange of those drugs, how those drugs bring down the cost?
Uh, this does not. This is just, uh, EPO and PPO zoomed, zoomed in on. Uh, but to quantify it, the general fund's one thirty and a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, and the water sewer fund is thirty-five thousand. So the total savings would be a hundred and seventy-four to the city. So, that's, that's what, that's what it quantifies to.
Is there any way to cut that in half and meet the employee halfway and only take a, a savings of ninety, would you say a hundred and? Hundred and seventy-five?
Uh, sure.
You don't hit the people who are retired or fixed income at that point?
We could get Genie up here too, if you'd like to hear her speak to it.
Genie's HR, because instinctively, I'm saying, don't, I wanna have this conversation with someone from HR that could give me a stronger sense of.
I'd like to instinctively have this conversation with Blue Care First, Care First, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, but.
I will say reflexively, um, for paying up to the lower one and having the employees. Pay beyond that, if we could put in some sort of mechanism that would allow retired individuals, fixed income individuals, not.
I'll be honest with you, seven years ago, it was, there's too many people going to the emergency room, so we, you know, set up a primary care physician, that's what was causing everything to blow up. And then once we got that taken care of, it was the one employee. His spouse was.
So regardless of what we do.
I, I, honestly, it reminds me of the water and sewer, it, no matter what, it's gonna be the sky is falling. And there's no way for municipality, and it's our job, respectfully to you and to staff, go to the grocery store. And try and figure out a way to say, everything's going up.
But then.
I mean, honestly, that's, I mean, if, if that's not politics and it's, and I guess if you're. I guess for me, after fourteen, fifteen years of doing it, you just say, is there ever a reason it doesn't? I sat at this table with Blue Cross, Blue Shield going.
You get savings at the one maybe, but.
But it just goes back to consortium.
Yeah.
A lot of folks choose the PPO, um, I, I know.
Cause psychologically, it's better.
It's hard to read, read defined print, and you say, what, I don't wanna risk my health, I'm gonna take the best coverage. And, and, and so you're in a hurry, you, you look at it, it's hard to digest all this, so you choose the best, cause the city's paying ninety percent of it. Why wouldn't?
I think some of it.
I know that's my choice, I wouldn't, if I'm only paying ten percent, I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump to the better coverage.
Some of it too is, so, I'm a diabetic, five years ago, PPO did not cover my endocrinol, or EPO did not cover my endocrinologist. But it does now, so it's sort of like when you get car insurance, how often do you revisit that?
Right.
I just don't think we have maybe those, that group of PPO looking to see if what wasn't covered that they needed. Is now covered under EPO.
They're saving money, switching.
If, if we're paying ninety percent, there's very little incentive not to go to the higher level, you know, or seventy-five percent, I think. For fam, that coverage, but for the individual, it's ninety percent.
Again, mine is more philosophical than it is financial. I don't have any issue with going forward, saying we're only gonna pay up to whatever the, we pay for the Blue Cross, Blue Shield. Or whoever it happens to be. But I do have a problem, I've always had a problem. And I've, I've come up against this in business all the time with benefit packages and, and, you know, we had talked about. People who took a job. Knew what they were, what their benefits were. To take those away from those people, because that was your call as the, whoever it was, whether it's the CEO or whatever. I have no trouble making the jump in the future, but I do have a problem, and I always will have a problem with that. So for me, the discussion about the cost is a moot point at this point, but I certainly think that we can. I, personally, I think through education, you're gonna have a bunch of people.
Who decided.
Who decide, wait a minute, why am I paying, why don't we just get the whole, just pay it? I, maybe I'm, I'm, but that's my, and I, and that's not gonna change, no matter what Genie says, so.
On that note.
If I'm, because my issue with that is under that. Then you can never renegotiate the employment contract, and there comes a time where contracts have to be renegotiated. And then people are open to the market if they don't like the new conditions.
Then they need a lawyer.
It's the first time since you've been on the council that you've interrupted. The lawyer thing came up, no.
But, but.
I hear what you're saying, you know, I do, I do, but, but.
Every relationship, every business relationship I have in my life gets renegotiated pretty periodically, typically annually, but sometimes longer than that.
Yeah.
And you know, the, the idea that you come in to work for this company, the terms change. You, at that time, you say, do I continue to work with this organization, or do I seek an organization that can provide the terms that I find desirable? And I think that's an individual choice that people have to make.
I respect your. If we were to discuss the other members of the consortium, considering that this is a contract, is that something that we would have to do in closed session?
Uh, this.
The only lawyer in the room.
This, this decision doesn't affect the consortium.
No, I know that, but if we were to discuss the other members of the consortium, and I know they went to.
Yes, we would have.
I was gonna say if they went, and, and I'm not sure I have a, if I formulated my questions about formularity number two yet, but. Normally in this discussion, we usually have some sort of paper that shows what everybody else's, or could we get. What everybody else's costs were, are we do, is, is, are the board and the county in the same, but we are. Are they having a problem with this, uh, these high-end prescriptions?
Yes, Genie's shaking her head.
Yes. They have a fifteen percent increase basically.
Fifteen?
Fifteen.
Okay, let's move on, we got six. Questions for Genie, a couple, uh, you, you had one, didn't you?
I, I, I was just saying, it seems like this is a, I mean, I don't wanna put you on the spot, it seems like it's something that one.
Yeah, you wanna put it on the spot, that's her job.
It happens daily.
So how many people would be impacted? So how many people would be impacted by this decision, should we decide to go with the coverage that? And I always get the acronyms confused.
The EPO and the PPO?
Yeah.
Currently, it's pretty much split right down the middle.
So a hundred and eighty-nine, uh, that are not including retirees, we haven't, so that's just water, sewer and general fund.
Alright, so.
About it.
It's about fifty-fifty.
Fifty-fifty, so.
Right, and I really think that the majority of them may not even be aware. Because they've had PPO for a very long time. That. Care First has penetrated the market so deeply here on the shore. And as well, we have worldwide doctors.
Right.
And they can just look it up on. Yeah, there's the telephone number too. If they're going out of the country to find where they're going, where the Care First doctors are, if they need a physician while they're out of the country. That's in the network.
Back to my point about education.
We could educate people out of the program and save the money.
Can we put together an education package and, uh?
Absolutely.
Okay.
It's difficult to defy inertia, if if people are where they are uncomfortable, where they are.
Alright, well then, less than one tenth of one percent. Of those individuals that carry PPO have actually used.
Gone out.
Uh, something outside of the network.
Yeah, it's.
Well, then I understand Councilman Rudisels about the contract and and as much as I don't want to put any more work on you, but it might be a good idea for somebody to sit down and go. If you don't change because you don't need this anymore, then we're eventually going to do this for you. Because if if it's one tenth, the one percent that needs to go out.
We're just not looking to completely eliminate PPO. What we're trying to do is equalize what the cost is to the city for all employees. That if you want the higher, um. PPO price, then you're gonna pay anything above what the EPO cost would be. We're not saying eliminate PPO, we're saying it's available too, but if you want it, you're going to have to pay that difference.
When does this change occur, when will they be able?
September one.
And they'll be able to make the change to their health insurance?
Yes, sir, in July, we have open enrollment.
Yeah.
The entire month, pretty much of July, is open enrollment period. On July the eighteenth, we have a benefits fair, let's put it that way. Where we go to four different locations for several hours, we alert the employees in advance. We tell them who is going to be there so that they can take a moment out of their day and come and sit down and talk with those representatives. We certainly could have that information available.
My concern is, I work at a place, I get that email, that's very boring, I am not attending, when I call my doctor, I get my service. And I'm not making the change that I need to make because it's difficult to defy inertia.
If you're working for somebody and they say, hey, every my, where I work, they do, you have open enrollment and and if if you don't take the time. That we're paying you to go here and sit here for an hour to talk about your insurance and about the benefits for you and your family, I mean. That's not the city's fault, we're giving you the opportunity, we're gonna tell you in advance, you know, you got a whole month to 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 do it and look into it. And then we're giving you a day that we're gonna come, we're gonna come to you, I mean.
I mean, I'm not saying.
Somebody calls out sick for work, you know, I mean.
I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, of course you have to do it. However, as far as waiting for people to self-actuate and say, I'm going to make this choice because it makes.
Unless you charge the whole.
I guess what I'm saying is I don't have much faith.
This year, if we're making this change and it's gonna affect your your paycheck, then those who have PPO now are gonna have to sit down. And acknowledge the change, I understand the change, I'm okay with paying this. Those that don't want to pay that can sit there, okay, I want to switch over to EPO, so they're gonna have to sit down and do it.
Right, I look in the book to see if there's pictures of anybody I know.
Let me see if I can, if I can bring this to, cause I saw nodding of heads when we're talking about going to the PPO and charging the, and just get matching what we we give for EPO. We have four. We have one knucklehead that has a philosophical problem with it and I can live with that. So.
Do we have four?
Yeah, we did.
It would, I don't know whether or not. Can I take thirty seconds? And can I take thirty seconds and formulate? Open enrollment is June, July. Example number one. Open enrollment is.
July.
July. Is there enough time between now and July? Is there enough people in this department? To basically run through with everybody? The benefits of staying on. PPO or coming back to EPO, because I'm gonna be honest with you, it it's a little bit more expensive and because I'm single and the chances of not being are, you know, very slim. I get the more expensive one because it's only a little bit more expensive and in your head, you go, I can go anywhere. But if you can go anywhere now for ninety percent of the people that we have, then we need to educate them. If we could get that done by through July. Then I could support what we're doing here. The only question I do have is in paragraph number two, it it says if we go to formulary number two. We save fifty-eight thousand dollars and our members two thousand dollars. My question is, and because I don't read the book, I'm assuming I'm reading this wrong. Why is it that we still need to do six percent if we're gonna save? Fifty-eight thousand dollars on changing the pharmacy list of drugs?
That's just based on what's being used right now. Fifty-eight thousand dollars.
My question, cause I need an answer to the question. Which is if we save fifty-eight thousand dollars by going to formulary number two, why would we still need to raise the rates six percent on our members? I mean, if that's fifty-eight thousand dollars in savings, it's gonna go back to the consortium, isn't it?
I'd I'd.
I keep pointing at you.
It's money that would not be spent, it's money that's already been spent.
It's this, it's these rules with.
And it will be in percent.
We tell them we're going to reduce it, we tell them they're using, and then we tell them it's gotta go up six percent and that's, I'm, I, this, the way this is set up. Is designed to make it impossible for us not to raise it and for. Clear-headed thinking, just it it. This, let me go back to paragraph number one then, because I'm trying to find a way to find the money for you not to have to raise it on them. These specialty drugs, if they go into formulary number two, let's say it's, this is the drug, give me your banana. This is the drug that costs so much, we find this one that isn't as much, we put that in formulary number two. How how does that reduce that seventy-three point two percent? I'm telling you, you gotta get the person from Blue Cross Blue Shield to come, it's like watching a boxing match.
You do.
It it, and if that saves. If it's, it's costing our plan, the top five specialty drugs used on our plan cost our plan four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year. If this is formulary number two drug, it doesn't cost as much, how much does that reduce that four hundred and twenty-five? And can that be used to help our employees not have, or you're just sending it all back?
It's not being all sent back to.
Or or sent, it's sent somewhere in the, in the big, in the big pot.
That's why they skip the meeting.
So we know how much money, because sometimes if there's a lot in there, you can get reimbursements to general funds, to the county, the board of education and to the city.
Correct.
But again, that's.
It's not, it doesn't actually go back to the general fund to my knowledge, it would.
It goes into what's that thing called?
Uh, restabilization fund?
Again, if I could, if I could, if I could sell rate stabilization fund to our employees. That we've raised the cost or we found a way to get cheaper drugs, but we're still raising them on you. I say, just like water and sewer, a larger discussion. About. This particular set of rules that we're in, we save money. And we still can't use that money to help our employees. Now that may be an oversimplification, but as I get older, that's the only way I can do it. Because, I mean, we're talking about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, this is what we're talking about, right? We're talking about a hundred and seventy-five and in a budget that is sixty, fifty-some million. And this is the place we're actually going, a budget that that is that big, we're talking about raising water and sewer rates and raising rates on employees. I just, I find that to be, and nothing else across this budget has been taken out. Now granted, you couldn't use it over there and that's, that's what I think is the thing that really, there's a reward that I won't use this early in the day to average citizens and average employees. That these rules make us have to take it from the least, from the least with the ability to pay for it.
It it's worth mentioning that the, um, the rate stabilization fund, last year we wrote a check for like three hundred thousand, so we did use some of our money. To normalize those rates, to smooth, keep them smooth, because self-insured means, you know, we we develop premiums. And we can be conservative or aggressive, you know, depending on our estimates. This year, we 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 had Care First fighting for eight percent, we insisted on six, so we're still using our funds. We're prepared to write another check for several hundred thousand because our rate stabilization fund is robust enough that it could handle it. So again, we set the premiums, but ultimately our cost of insurance is based on the claims, not not having anything to do with the premiums. That's just how fast we fund the cost, so our actual expense is gonna be the claims.
Then the, and and your question leads to a larger question, Keith, if if it's based on claims.
Right.
Did employee health work?
Did employee health work?
Did, did doing all the things that that we've done about employee health, did it work?
If the, if the fund is robust, then it is obviously.
Then I said, then I understand from a business perspective, you see the spreadsheet and how that works, but out there on the street, you got healthier, you've got a big surplus in your rate stabilization plan, but guess what? Your rates are going up again and that makes no sense to people who don't have, what's, what's the, what's the thing Keith always uses those and and Barbara Kane Thornton? The, you know, those. National rules of people.
They're easier though, actually.
But it's still a set of rules that make.
Yeah.
That are for accountants.
Well, we're, we're partly under the, um, direction of Care First and as you know, you you negotiated with them and.
Oh, yes.
And and we did the same thing, we and.
Blew in the face.
Jeannie did a a great job of going from, they were looking at ten to twelve and to get to six is, it was a home run, you know, as far as we were concerned. Uh, it was great.
But that's under the assumption that going up is okay, if you have in your rates, if you have a robust rate stabilization, which means the employees have saved. To my colleagues, I want to say, the employees have reduced. And it's not just, I guess, did the other ones have robust, does the county and the board of education have robust?
I'm starting to regret that word, but, uh, adequate. Adequate should have been, uh, should have been, should have been the word to describe it, but bottom line is, is that, um. We felt that, uh, ten percent was too much and, uh, they insist that the trending healthcare cost is rising rapidly. It it, na- nationwide and they're looking at their national trends, not just the city of Salisbury. And it's true, the last couple of months, our our claims have exceeded our premiums and so they're looking at that and they're saying that. Uh, the six percent is necessary in order to, uh, meet, meet the claims this year.
Do you, let me ask this question and I'm done. Cause this is just. It's that old familiar feeling. Is a discussion and a look at those claims? Necessary, necessary in in this particular case because. I would like, I I would be interested in knowing if the seventy-three point two percent increase in the specialty drugs. Came from singular people. Because if I have to raise them, and I'm just gonna use the analogy when I'm at the grocery store, I have no problem dumping this into Latha Care Cross, Care First, Blue Cross Blue Shield. We got Obamacare and and another seven, eighteen million people in the country are covered, this was supposed to at least bring costs down and it's not. And we're told a story by these insurance companies time after time after time after time again. I'm gonna, I'm gonna request it, but I don't, if you all don't find it necessary to see it, that's fine with me, but I'm gonna request it if we could. I'd like to see the pyramid with how many people are in the green, how many people are in the yellow, how many people are in the red, you know, it's one pop them out, you and I have been there with that nice lady so many times.
Yeah, I, you know, this is, this reminds me of Ma Bell. Exactly. Let's face it.
Yeah.
And and there's, there's really. They've got us, uh.
Yeah, yeah, another one you can't say.
I won't use the engineering, I won't use the engineering term, but, um, they've got us, you know, and and this is, and and I. I don't disagree with what you're saying, Jim, but I think we're, we're, we're left with this decision that we need to do something. Obviously, there's a recommendation that was brought to us, um, essentially saying we can save some money. There, the opportunity is there and despite. Personal philosophical differences, um, it seems like we have a consensus to to go forward with it and. That's fine, but I just want to take a vote so that we know that we're, informal vote. Mira, you okay with it? You okay?
Kind of sort of.
Okay, good.
I'm okay with it.
Jim? No, sir. Oh, boy.
Kind of sort of, because it's like you're getting mess from.
Did you want to introduce the alternative, you could do, you could do half to give them some incentive to look at the differences.
I wish we had time to do the education piece and see how many people would.
How many people would switch over?
Switch over, I I personally think you're, we're gonna be.
I mean.
My guess is at least half.
Really well educated on this.
It's, it's exactly what, it's exactly what Jeannie said, exactly what Allison said, most people, if you don't incentivize them to move, it's what you two said. Why, why move, why move the dial up, I don't have to reflect it, but if you're gonna charge me money, then maybe I need to have a serious conversation. Some people may say, well, the cost savings is this, and if I can see my list of my doctors and people I get that are on this list, I'm gonna save a hundred bucks a month or whatever, I'm gonna go with that. It's, what's the value of that in case something rare happened that I would be covered by this other thing, whether it's international travel or some rare thing that pops up? But those are one tenth of one percent, it's so few. What I did personally is I was like, I can't switch over, cause I had it for eleven years at PPO. And I went through and I punched in every single one of our doctors we see and it's like, they're on there, they're on there, they're on there, they're on there. It's like, alright, specialist after specialist after specialist, I'm like, well, why am I paying more money? But I had to get to that process because I wanted to say. So I think, I think it's an education piece, but if you don't, you can educate people, but if they don't really care.
And and it's not even that they don't care, it's that some of them do not understand.
Yeah, I don't, I mean.
The understanding, it takes time to explain for a lot of people are not aware.
To that point.
So you have to educate them.
They do understand money.
Well, they do understand money.
So you, to root the hardest point.
The terms.
I, I hear what you're saying that now.
It's convoluted, there's an external company that's under a growth model and we have to show as a consumer that you aren't gonna keep your thumb on us. And if we make this move, we begin, we're one small entity amongst the several that are saying.
You've convinced me. No, seriously, the discussion, the discussion makes sense based on that.
Yeah.
It does. The the discussion, I'm not, I wasn't comfortable with the, the the concept, but that makes sense to me. Because it essentially, we're not cutting their.
Right.
We're not cutting their service.
So is the hope that, that if they take the EPO instead of the PPO, it negates the six percent increase? Well, I mean, it'll be less out of their paycheck, but the, but the increase in the EPO, which is six percent. Would that balance out, we've, we've done that as a group before in years past, trying to balance out the increase with a decrease. But if they went to the EPO.
I think they'd still see savings because the difference between EPO and PPO, maybe twenty, twenty-five percent, it's it's a lot larger of a jump, it's not six. It's probably, yeah.
And when you weigh it out, you're looking, you're looking at, seeing, you still save it because you're not paying as much for your doctor's care. You're not paying as much for your hospitalization. I know what you're saying, he wants to.
To use the savings.
Six percent for those who have remained in the EPO, who have been there, he wants to show them some savings as well.
Can we do that?
Okay, Jean.
Well, doesn't sound more like we're playing roulette with what you choose to do.
Yeah, I don't think we belong making those decisions for individuals.
Six percent is based on what our experience rating has been so far this year. What they project next year's needs are going to be.
Have they done that?
They did, and they came back with ten to twelve percent. And we just said, it's absolutely not, we understand things are in double digit, but we're not prepared to be there.
Okay. Jim, do you stay, still say no?
I could say yes if we, we got a detailed plan as to how we're gonna get these, each one of these employees in.
Great, you can do that.
Okay, and I'd be willing to help with that.
We're good.
Because it wouldn't hurt me to read my book either. And mine is the same book, I mean, through the Board of Education, it's the same book.
Okay, we got, let's, that's good, uh, we need a ten-minute bio break. Uh, next up on the, uh, there's two things on from the police, uh, the Safe Streets Grant and the Grant Match.
Well, I can talk about Grant Match if you want, I'm not the police, but I came up with it.
Well, you can talk about the police, but we're not gonna listen.
First of all, I think that they should all have water dogs. Keith, would you mind pulling up the Grant Match?
Okay, so, um, I'll, I'll start with the COPS Grant, because that's, uh, the largest amount. So the, the way that the COPS, uh, agreement is written, is we have to increase our share of the total amount each year. So we had proposed that we had paid for thirty percent the first year, thirty-three percent the second year, and thirty-seven percent the third year. However, because, uh, of the requirement that we hire only veterans with that money. SPD has only been able to hire one person thus far out of the two. So originally last year, when we budgeted, um, our match, we assumed that we'd be hiring two, and therefore budgeted thirty-one thousand. So, um, with a kind of maximum liability for next year, which would be that we hire a second person starting July one. And finishing out this year, um, and everything else, even though our share of the amount that we're paying. For the officers is increasing, our total amount actually decreases to, uh, that approximately thirty-three thousand. For Drug Court, um, which is through the, uh, Circuit Court. Um, uh, Gun Violence Reduction Initiative, which is, I believe, a federal program passes through the state. And then Marshals, which is directly from the US Marshal Service, we only pay the FICA, um, because it's all for overtime pay. So there's no retirement or life insurance attached to it, um, and the reason we do that is that enables us to, uh, expend more of the funds. For actual overtime, which obviously looks better. The, uh, Keith can talk about the protective vests, um, we just, uh, needed, we didn't need that in there. It's pretty much what it comes down to because of the way the funds were requested, um, by Colonel. Um, and then, uh, the Safe Streets, uh, if you wanna go to that tab. So under the application that Colonel just submitted yesterday, I believe, I got the email. Um, the Safe Streets is actually changing to, uh, forgive me if I'm butchering the name, but I believe it's Maryland Crime Intelligence Analyst Network thing. Um, probably in there, and the proposal that was included was to, uh, reduce the overall pay. Of the Safe Streets Coordinator, it's just a reduction of about eight thousand dollars. Um, and instead, uh, hire a crime, crime data analyst specialist. Um, so the, the way that Safe Streets was originally created is, it was, um, an evolution of, uh. I can't, CSafe, um, which was kind of a community engagement, sort of quasi, looking at violent felon sort of thing. And over time, Safe Streets has really just turned mainly into a crime data, um, program looking at our region's most violent offenders. Or those that are most likely to offend, um, so with that change in kind of the overall mission according to the state. Um, they decided to just kind of rename and rebrand and, and change the program, um, to really be focusing more on, on what it's actually doing. Which is trying to get our most violent, um, uh, criminals, uh, either off the streets. Or if they are, you know, here to ensure that they aren't committing new crimes. So with that, um, kind of idea, they, uh, SPD, and I believe the mayor was involved in that as well. Uh, decided that, you know, an additional analyst would be really helpful, um, to really ensure that we have a robust program going forward. So with that, um, we, being the city, would have paid for approximately seventy percent of the, uh, fringe. So assuming, uh, maximum FY nineteen PPO family benefits.
Yeah, I think she probably changed it this morning.
Okay, whatever the. Whatever the ZPO benefits are, um, is approximately thirty thousand for that, so all told, um. Fringe is about forty-four, so seventy percent of that's thirty thousand.
Is that the same, is that where it was, what, what it's been?
Uh, the, the match?
Yeah.
No, cause it's been less than that for two reasons, first of all, there wasn't the second position, and second of all, Christine only had, um, a single. She, she didn't have family.
Okay, got you.
I want to point out here that if you go back to Sheet One, um, that Keith had estimated that we would probably need to increase our amount by fifteen thousand. And I did all those calculations, and it turns out Keith was almost exactly right.
Surprise, surprise.
So, yeah, so that, that took me like half a day, and Keith was. Yeah, exactly, and I, I was, I was off by like three thousand bucks. So, yeah, so the, the mayor level adjustment, or council level adjustment is, uh, sixteen thousand, seven, twenty-six. So, yeah. And the way, I wanna add one last thing, the way that we've handled Grant Match is that it sits in a transfer account within the general fund. So if, uh, for whatever reason, SPD should not receive that second position as part of the Safe Streets, um, or whatever it is. Criminal Analyst Network thing now, um, that money would just sit in that, uh, account and then just roll over. Um, or, you know, go back into surplus, am I right?
What money rolls over, I heard the cult at tail end of that.
Oh, just that if.
Can you say the part again about where I was right?
Keith was right.
I do that with my wife all the time, she says something.
So the community realizes, um, no, uh, just that because we put it in a transfer. Operational transfers account, um, if SPD does not get that second position, will not be moving that money, and then that move, money will be going back into surplus.
Well, usually if we have a, a Grant Match, uh, we, we'll go ahead and transfer the full amount of the Grant Match into the, um, Grant Fund. And then it resides there.
Okay, well, then, I'm completely wrong, again.
I can see an argument for and against, I can see if we didn't, but since it was an appropriation, we send it there, and if, as long as it's used for that purpose.
Right.
For that, uh, the stated purpose, it would be okay.
Otherwise, we had to do a transfer.
Uh, otherwise, if we could not use it, we would transfer it back sometime, but, but it would roll over if, uh, if, if we wanted to, so to speak. But it's, it's worth noting that in previous years, this came with a, I think sometimes a commitment, so that you didn't make a decision for thirty thousand for that one year. It might be, you have a four-year commitment or a three-year commitment, so you really, you were committing to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, let's say, if it was five years. But this is, there is no, um, multi-year commitment, it's a, it's a, an annual commitment. But, so that's, I mean.
Yeah, and I think part of that was because of the employee, trying to ensure that we retain that employee, it was Christine.
When they, yeah, they were ins, making it, uh, more likely that we would do that.
Right.
So the employee is an analyst?
There's two employees, one, uh, so right now the position's vacant, um, because Christine left. Um, but the, the proposed positions is a Safe Streets Coordinator, so they would be doing, um. Kind of Christine previously was, was combining two different positions, so she was doing Safe Streets coordinating. Um, which is kind of preparing everything for the, uh, for her portion of ComStat. Um, actually, can you talk about it, cause you oversaw her?
So Christine, Christine was actually fulfilling, she was doing a lot of, uh, tracking on, uh, the Safe Street offenders. And keeping track whether or not they were in jail, arrested, um, you know, where they were, uh, popping up on police calls. Um, and she, as well as she coordinated like all the, uh, law enforcement meetings, state, with the State Attorney's Office. So I mean, she's, it's a wide, wide-ranging, uh, uh, group that you have to reach out to. Fruitland, MSP, Delmar, um, Sheriff's Department, SPD, State Attorney's Office. Pro and probation, the US Marshals, everybody, you know, ends up being a part of this group with the Safe Streets. And that coordinator keeps all that information and stuff flowing. Christine was also reaching out and actually going to other Safe Street meetings, something like Cambridge and stuff, and then coming back, so I mean. She was, she was extremely busy with that position.
Yeah, she used to have community meetings also, the Safe Streets.
Yeah, and the, yeah, and, and she was trying to, um, maintain the community meetings, but the turnout on the community meetings was not.
We're calling it Safe Streets, but it's currently not called Safe Streets.
It's, it's about to change, that's right, yeah.
So, so, and it's an analyst position, so whereas.
It's two positions.
Two analyst positions.
Coordinator.
Coordinator and analyst.
Right.
Yeah.
She was doing both.
Both jobs.
And what the coordinator was doing was coordinating the efforts of law enforcement to track individuals that have engaged in criminal behavior in the past.
And she was doing.
So it was primarily on the prosecut, prosecutorial side?
Or the preventative side.
Preventative side. It was on the preventative side, it's, it's, so it's not a rehabilitative effort.
No, actually, it, it certainly could be considered that, because what you're doing is also trying to, through Pred Poll and ComStat and all the rest of it. You're predicting, it's a predictive, it's a predictive model, that if this person, knowing what we know from all of the different analysts. In the room, not you, Hardy, but this person, given the situation, has a very high predict, very high predictor of. Either committing a crime again, or somebody coming after that person, many a murder in this city has been stopped because we have pulled people off the street. Knowing that other people were coming for them, and that's what, that discussion with the Marshals, our discussion with Delaware, our discussion with counties to the north. Our discussion with, uh, parole and probation officers throughout the country about what happens when people get out, where are they going? The other part of it was also a re-entry issue as well, helping people get back into and not, and helping them not make the same mistakes again. Also through conflict resolution, helping people figure out how to deal with their families for the first time in several years, and the pressures that come along with that. My question is, do we already have an analyst doing ComStat and Pred Poll, or whatever we're calling it now, because that changes. Every six months, and is this, this position here, the second one, does that put another officer out on the street? Or are there two people now looking at data, or would there be two people?
Well, it wouldn't be, um, it wouldn't put another officer out on the street, because it's, these are all civilian roles. But, um, but it would potentially, um, I mean, the question is, what is the state offering? And one of the things they're offering is that you can have an, an analysis task and a coordination task. Uh, now, you could accomplish, try to accomplish that with one person, or you could accomplish that with two people. Um, simultaneously, you know, we are, I think we're increasing the amount of, we have been increasing the amount of workload that the analysts are expected to do. Um, in PD in the last year or so, um, Kendall's workload is increasing, um, and she's, uh, physically moved into. Uh, GIS team space, and she's over there now, um, so they're, they're, they have more on their plate. This is, the program's gonna change, so it's tough to, it's tough to know, it's changing, I don't think the state a hundred percent knows what it's paying for. You know, I think they, you know, they're, they're sort of changing strategy mid-stream, and that's what they do, and they rename it. And it's a new governor, and a new governor's program, and I wanna call it my thing now, I don't wanna call it the last guy's thing, that sort of. So I, it's tough to say, um, and I, I think the question is, uh, you know, could two people accomplish more? Um, from, from an analysis and planning and coordination standpoint. The other thing is, this is more focused on a smaller number of. Problem individuals than Safe Streets has been historically, Safe Streets is, I don't, it was, you know, the top twenty-five, you know, longer list.
Yeah, we, we, at one point we had a very long list and.
Well, it's good that the list is getting smaller. It's more focused, yeah.
The highest risk.
I just, if there's, because forty-four thousand dollars is up there where a police officer starts. Maybe even a little less than what a police officer starts at, so, I mean, this is grant money, I mean, so tinkering with it is. I just would hope that if we, if using the matrix that I know of, Mr. Mayor, you have set up for them, because that's how, that's how you do this. Do this with a matrix, and this is what I want done, this is, these are the results I wanna see, if, if that person is doing it with one, and we can do more with two. Then I would say, say that, dude.
Yeah, I think, well, I'm hopeful that, that no matter what the state's expectations are.
Okay.
You know, what we saw with Christine, I think, is that you can get a lot out of these people, you know, the person you put in the job, regardless of what the state's expectations are. So the state's gonna make us reporters on X, Y, and Z, the state's gonna try to force a model, right? But I think we can always make it our own, um, and with, um, another person who can do the data analysis. And do the information analysis, um, cause you have to remember, these are, these are people who go through the full background, everything, so that they have access to all the information they need. They know everything, you know, they can have access to all data and information about, um, you know, suspects and, um, you know.
And they implemented two nice programs through Safe Streets, which was Salisbury Transitioning Offenders Program. That was a really great program, and it only, they only did it one time, and it was really great, and then they had the Quiet Summer for the, for the youth. Yeah, that was really good, and I, I, I talked to the chief a couple of times about even bringing those two programs back. Because I even had one of the offenders who's willing to come back, that was on that program, to help with other, um, transitional offenders.
So I think we, again, we can make it our own, you know, so with, with more resources, we can do more, and if we can afford it, then that's. I think it's, I think it's worthy of the conversation.
Okay.
I'm skeptical because I really don't understand what we're paying for at this point.
We're paying for state money.
We're paying for.
We're not paying for any.
There's gonna be a city, man, there's, there's gotta be element that we're paying for, there's nothing we're paying for.
We're paying thirty, yeah.
Paying thirty?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so the question, the question is. Your, your question about, and your skepticism is about a relatively poorly defined state.
What you're saying is the state sets a floor, but we can determine what we do beyond that.
And I think, yeah, and I think we'd have to, cause they're, you know, it's.
Our, our Safe Streets Coordinator in that program in Wycombe County has always been used as like a, a model for the rest of the state anyways. We've always been the top, the leading, cutting edge of that, so I mean, as far as prosecutions are, are, you know. Tracking this, the way we, we pull everybody in to do our group meetings, um, so they're, like Cambridge, uh. When, uh, Christine went up there, she was actually helping them, you know, coordinators and, and build their program as well. So I mean, it's, it's got far-reaching, uh, uh, consequences, I know you're thinking Cambridge is not our business, but.
No, I'm not, I do.
But Cambridge, Cambridge offenders are also Salisbury offenders, and we're seeing, we're seeing a trend.
I, 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 I get that, I get that, I deal with the offenders, um, some of, some of them, um. I don't know, I just still, I don't have a tangible sense of what they're doing. And, you know, that might just be a separate conversation.
I think it would be a good idea.
If it's costly.
If someone was invited to a meeting, yeah.
Yeah.
Let's go to a meeting.
You'll, you'll love it, I, I did, I really loved it.
I think we, we need to start setting those up again, we, we need the, the staffs in place to do that. But, but those meetings, um, when they were well-attended, you know, it was a, it was a good community safety conversation discussion in general. Um, good data, uh, discussion as well about trends. Um, but I think the poten- the potential too, you, you know, mentioning operation quiet summer. The potential is that we can go way beyond, you know, just sort of the conversations and we can develop, you know, new tools.
See, cause where some saw where it, it failed, I saw where it was success. Because the three offenders never came back.
Didn't reoffend.
They didn't reoffend. Matter of fact, one of them moved away, it, he's a Christian and doing all kinda outreach programs. And there was another young lady who was, um, she dropped out of college. Now she's back in college and doing very well. The other like young lady, we haven't heard from her since. So, you know, from tracking, it's, it's really been a success. I don't know whether she's back out there again or not, but we haven't heard of her reoccurring, uh, reoccurring crimes that she's committed. So I, and you know, and offending, drug offending and stuff like that. So I, I thought it was a success and I thought it should have gone, gone on further. Because just helping three people at a time is, is a success to me, you know?
So there's, and there's two, two things have happened, you know, one, you know, uh, Christine moved.
Yeah, yeah.
Two, two, um, we saw the writing on the wall about the program changing and going away maybe two years ago. Just, you know, cause as soon as Governor Hookin came in, basically, the assumption was every, every year, Colonel Minchin came in and was like, well, we're not gonna have that grant anymore, cause that's not gonna exist. And it did, except the state office cops, you know, I mean, uh, our governor's office of crime control and convention, you know, just started sloughing off staff, you know? It was just trunk, 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 trunk and, you know, nothing was coming out of it, there was no guidance, there was no direction. It was like, yeah, here, here, here's the money still, but, you know, there's no state strategy, there's no state coordination. So I think the potential now is that, okay, there's, there's a new plan, at least a new title, you know? Uh, or you could call it something else, start sending the money downrange, you know, start sending the money out to the communities and.
Last thing I'd like to read is that the grant, total grant amount's like three hundred thousand dollars. So we're only putting up like ten percent of total amount, it's.
Is the chief comfortable that thirty-two thousand dollars will buy somebody who can handle all that? I mean, I, I'm, I'm not, I know, I was in it, I was there when it all started. And I, we found somebody who really, but, but we got very, very, very lucky after interviewing how many people. I just, you know.
And stick around though.
And stick around.
You'll get something for a year.
I know.
Stepping stone at that.
I'd like to note that as difficult as that job, or as difficult as I made Christine's, uh, life, she still does not wanna go back to that job, so that really tells you something about the workload.
Right.
Cause she is sick and tired of, about hearing about Balkan work rooms, so.
Okay, any other questions?
What do you need us to do? Are we just approving the thirty thousand dollars to go along with it if it comes our way?
Yeah. The sixteen thousand dollars.
We're sick, I'm sorry.
It's, the difference is sixteen.
The adjustment would be thirty, the, the decision to, to support this grant would be thirty. So you have to pay thirty to get ninety, you can see it, the, the, the total program's a hundred and twenty-one. And we can't, we can't get to ninety unless we put in our thirty.
I just ignored you anyway, so.
You said what, it was sixty?
What, what Keith's doing by the way behind the scenes is he's keeping track of all, so that we can see what the net effect is. On everything at the end, we'll just go through and see where we are. Hopefully it'll be blue letters or black letters and not red.
Not red, or ones in parentheses.
Or ones in parentheses.
I'm not sure what that means.
And I'd like to note for the entire time we're talking about this, Keith completely re-formatted that document.
I know.
It's really nice.
I know. That's why sometimes you didn't answer the question the first time. All right.
All right, what's next?
Uh, let's see.
So we have approval for the thirty?
Yeah, well, at least we have to agree. We may have to come back to it when, like, we see.
When we see the big.
Final number.
Right, I just wanted to know whether to put it in or not.
Yeah, put it in, yeah, yeah.
Okay, um.
So Mayor, I have, I have the, uh, adjustment down here for the other, I know you saw me put the thirty in, they were just separated.
Oh, okay.
Cause the deci- this was kinda just truing it up.
Sure.
And this was a decision today whether we were gonna, uh, support that program.
Yes.
But the nets, the nets in there.
Okay.
We have anything else for, uh, on this, go ahead, well, what's next? Where, where do you wanna go?
While we have them here, if we could jump to the youth specialists.
Fine, okay, youth specialist.
Uh, Keith, I've put the amounts, I think the actual amounts might, might, might be under the homeless folder, but the job description, then they're just HCDV.
Where you want me to, where you want me to go first?
Uh, just go to Department HCDV, um, and I guess let's just start with the job, I guess, uh.
This guy?
Mister President, uh, would you prefer job description first or numbers first?
Uh, just to, you can just do a quick summary.
All right, uh, so the job description is, uh, unfortunately, we didn't receive any, uh, return bids from the, uh, Newton Street Community Center, um, or we did, but they wanted absurd amounts of money. Um, so there's a couple of different models that we can take with it.
You need it smaller, you can't keep doing that for us all.
Yeah, well.
There you go.
There you go, that's all right.
There's a couple of different models that we could go with it. Um, one would be to try to put together a team ourselves. Um, another would be, uh, Amber's been doing a lot of great work with trying to, uh, get different vendors in on weekends, um, for, sorry, for the Truitt Street Community Center. So in other words, we would kinda be managing the calendar internally. Um, so that, that's kind of a model that we could take with Newton Street is that we, uh, you know, with, with, with proper staff support, um, uh, don't, uh, you know, again, do not do any programming, we're, we're not going to be responsible for programming of any kind. But with the combination of the work that Amber's been doing thus far, and, um, the Newton Street Community Center coming online in addition with Truitt Street, um, we'd be able to provide the necessary support, uh, for, uh, sorry, Colonel Lockin, um, for the community center, sorry. Um, do you wanna switch back to Colonel? Okay. Um, so, uh, Amber, uh, was, was able to put together a, a kind of a look at what she's been doing thus far. Um, so some of the projects that she's worked on, um, she put together a town hall, youth-led town hall, um, that I believe Andy attended, um, I think there were around like ten kids there, um, that, uh, worked to identify a number of different problems and, and possible solutions. Um, she did, uh, she's done a lot on social media, um, so she's increased the Facebook page for the YDAC up to two hundred and seventy-one likes. Um, she did a couple of Twitter town halls, um, looking at issues such as LGBTQ, youth, adulting, and youth of crime. Um, I would say, uh, probably one of her most popular activities has been the school bus stop pop-ups. Um, she's done a total of six, three in the fall, um, or I think she's done a total of four or five. And she did three in the fall, one in the spring, and then she's got a couple more coming up, um.
Theo, could I stop you for a minute?
Yeah, sure.
One thing that always concerns me when we talk about position, is that we don't create a position based on the person.
Right, right.
We base the position on the need.
Right.
Yeah.
So, is it okay if I share that? All right, so, so Amber's actually gonna be leaving, um, she's taking a, a job with a local radio station to be one of their co-hosts.
So what you're, what you're indicating when you're reading is what the expectations are.
Yes.
For whoever that position is.
Yes, yes.
Now I'm, now I'm more comfortable.
But not for programming at either one of the centers, it's just all these things that your staff has been.
Yeah, I'll just keep it programming, but not actual.
Just cause at least our, our opinion has been that us running youth programming as a city government that has not done that historically.
We don't belong there.
Let's let, let, you know, experts engage with, and we've found willing partners so far, so let's let the people who do it do it. And there's all sorts of things that come along with, you know, watching kids and, you know, and running programming for kids. Yeah, let's let the experts do that.
And just in general, local governments don't do well with that. I mean, like, I mean, if, if you look at the other models, like Baltimore City for instance, they don't, their LME does a lot of programming of that, they don't do it themselves. Um, so, uh, a lot of what we heard in terms of, you know, the vendors that are interested in being part of the Newton Street Community Center.
When you, I'm sorry, but when you say a vendor, you obviously have put out some sort of RFP, providing of services for these?
Yes.
Okay, can you delve into that?
So, uh, is, is that okay?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Um, so un- unfortunately, we did not receive any, uh, we received one proposal for that solicitation and it was from a group based out of Baltimore that, uh, that was requesting two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to run the programming. And I dug into their nine-nineties and they looked to be a bit of a sham because their director is making a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year working twenty hours a week. Um, so, but they, the, so the archdiocese is.
But they replied, well, hold on a second, but they replied to your RFP, so can you talk about the RFP?
Yes. Okay, so, sorry, that, that'll be helpful.
The personal history of the person.
Yeah, let me put that in context, I mean, that, that was how we originally said we would run all programming for the, uh, community centers, would be through, uh, services provided by nonprofit or community entities through an RFP, selected through an RFP, uh, rather than the city try to run those programming. Um, and what we found with Truitt Street for example, was rather than RFP, um, we did a, a sort of a low-key, hey, who wants to, you know, who's out there that, uh, and there were two entities that were already operating in the neighborhood that had lost their home. Um, you know, and so we signed agreements with them to let them operate.
And they're running now.
And they're doing great work. Um, and then, uh, and then there's a third entity working on an agreement with us now. And then it's open for anybody to rent in the hours that nobody's using it. Um, so with Newton Street, we just did a more formal process, uh, because, you know, it was actually the Youth Development Advisory Council recommended a more formal process. Um, and, uh, the, the, uh, I guess the process has resulted in, but our, our expectations were high and tailored not to necessarily anyone out there that exists that, that we know of. But, you know, looking for something similar to what, um, Epoch or Fruitland Community Center, one of those entities, you know, has done. Um, so we might need to dial that back.
Well, my, my question to Theo is, is even though Baltimore City has their, what is it, you said O M D office, doesn't it?
The LMB.
But they still pay for it, the city still pays for it.
Yeah, I mean, they, they use, they do, so it's, it's a, it's state and city money, I don't know how much is state money, I don't know how much is city money. Um, a lot of what I heard from the vendors that, that were interested applying is, it wasn't necessarily that they didn't wanna do the programming, whether they didn't have the capacity or the programming, it was, it's kinda more the site management component of it and the calendar component. And they, they really got more, uh, I don't know if concerned is the right word, when it comes to, you know, us putting the responsibility of engaging with outside people to use the space, um.
So is it, they were looking more like a kids' club situation where it's already in an established building that already has the electricity, that already has, everyone's out of it cause it's after school?
Yep.
And that's not what we have?
Well, no, we, we are paying for the electricity and.
No, I, I don't mean, you know, I'm saying that what we don't have is an established that this is open from this time to this time. And they don't wanna do that stuff, they wanna come in and do the programming, they just don't wanna manage. They don't wanna say ever it's there from eight to five, or ever it's in charge of, something happens with the lighting.
We're looking for the tenant resident who then, when they were not running programming, who then fills up that calendar? Who then manages that space? And that's what this position potentially helps them.
How much is, I'm sorry, did I miss it, how much is the youth development director?
Uh, no, I mean, you didn't miss it because we.
We didn't get it, we, we just did the.
Oh, that's right, that's the other one, okay.
Job position.
So, uh, so the, the, before we switch to the money, uh, the thing that I wanted to point out here is, is I also put in the youth civics council. So currently the, the city has, uh, one and a half AmeriCorps volunteers, um, so the full-time person, Amber Green, um, she's been doing all of youth development stuff and like the stuff I was talking about in terms of the town hall, the bus stop, pop-ups, the, uh, on the table, uh, we were working on an AmeriCorps affiliate grant, uh, and, uh, the neighborhood community walks and all that kinda stuff. Then there's also the youth civics council, um, which unfortunately has been a turnover in coordinators, so there's been a little bit of a lapse in that. Um, but to, to save money, if we were to go this direction, um, one, one recommendation that the, that I would suggest, um, is that we actually eliminate both AmeriCorps positions and combine those duties into this specialist position. Um, and that, that would save us money. Um, not, not eliminate the green person, um, green team person, but, uh, but, cause it costs about eighty-six, eighty-six hundred dollars for a full-time AmeriCorps person. Um, and so they would also be doing youth civics council, um, and then management of, uh, of the community centers, YDAC, um, summer youth work program, um, in terms of recruitment and the application process, uh, then, uh, youth SPD stuff, uh, Chief's been interested in this, uh, teen brain academy or that Baltimore City put together that we've been looking for grant funding for, um, and, and those sort of things.
So Theo, you're saying some of the position potentially would be subsidized through grant funding?
Oh, no, sorry, well, I mean, it could potentially, um, we, we haven't been actively looking into that, it could potentially. But, uh, but part of the position cost would be subsidized by the elimination of the AmeriCorps position.
What are the requirements?
Uh, so, we, we kept it fairly, uh, open, um, because, you know, we want to. High school degree equivalent and maybe some experience with. I, I put associates. Associates, okay. Associates, bachelor's preferred. Cause we, we want them to have some type of higher ed.
And how much are we looking at?
So the, um. High thirties maybe? The, the position was, uh, thirty, thirty thousand, yeah, if you go to any of those, they should all be there. Um, if you go to position breakdowns all the way over to the right, um, and then it's that one all the way over to the right.
Thirty.
Thirty, thirty-two fifty-one. Um, the, the two options are to have it where, what, what am I doing?
Thirty-two thousand?
No, no, I'm sorry, sorry.
Thirty thousand, two hundred and fifty-one.
Yeah, sorry, thirty thousand, two hundred and fifty-one for salary.
For the job description we just looked at?
Yes. Do you think that's too high? I mean, we're.
I think, uh, well, I, I'll just keep quiet.
Well, I mean, so that, that's just a suggestion, I mean, we're, we're not, uh.
We can, I mean, has Jeannie validated that?
No, not yet, we haven't had.
I guess as if she does, I guess as if she does, it doesn't go up.
Seriously?
Yeah.
I.
I, I could see working with youth, that's, that's, that's substantial.
That's, I mean, that's about what.
That's substantial, cause I'm saying working with youth is not a.
I'm not saying any one of us would wanna take, you know, that job necessarily, but that's, you know.
Okay, I mean, we, we could make it a bachelor's position and that, that would make it go up, but, uh, I mean, that, that's.
We'd have to justify why it would require a bachelor's.
Exactly, um, so the, the, the two options in terms of payment would be, uh, do it, do it that total amount with benefits. Um, and, and that benefits calculation is low, um, because I, I did, uh, I guess EPO now, uh, EPO, whatever it is, gym PO. Whatever you wanna call it, uh, Keith liked that one.
Okay, we all do.
We'll call him, please.
I'll be sitting at my table for the convenience.
Uh, for, for the, the single, uh, because, uh, you know, again, we, we were talking about a specific individual. Um, so potentially with benefits, that could go up another about ten thousand, right? About sixteen thousand is the high amount, if I'm remembering that correctly. And then the other option would be no benefits, so it'd just be like on salary, so we'd be looking at thirty-two thousand, eight hundred.
How, how do you do it no benefits, you make it part-time?
Uh, you make it contractual.
Make it contractual?
Year to year.
I, I think you could get a college student to do it for us. You won't get as good work.
Well, and, and I think, and I don't know whether this is the time or place for it, but that job description is entirely, entirely too much. You've got them going over several different departments. And, and I, and I love you all, but I can see all the stuff that a bunch of you have done over the last couple of years that has been like, all right, we gotta do that, all getting locked into this one thing you want somebody else to do.
Catch all.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, I, I don't wanna do youth civics for, I don't wanna do the convention for children or, I don't wanna, you know what I mean? I don't, I don't wanna do the summer program.
Here you go.
I can see something you've come up with.
For a young person, that's substantial.
All in one, but I don't know whether or not this, I would suggest that we take a look at the goal of the centers and if the centers are your goal.
I mean, I can see a young person.
Then, then being there at the two centers for that employee, I mean, I, I appreciate you wanting to coordinate. the youth summer program, but that's in public works and that's with Jeannie, i- if you want these centers open and kids in them.
So, if I can address the, the summer program.
Well, I'm not here to debate you, I'm saying that's.
But, that's the whole reason I come to council. But, I just, uh, Je- Jeannie is, the only thing that we've been doing with the youth civics council is just the recruitment and application and all that stuff. We've actually already been doing that and, uh, and now Jeannie's taking over the hiring and everything else and she's, she's full steam ahead.
But you could have Amber, Amber would get it for eight thousand, you know what I'm saying, eight thousand dollars.
Yeah, I mean, she is, she is leaving for another job, so.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, she did this for way less than this.
She did a lot of stuff, see, the only piece that she didn't do is any sort of, um, programmatic supervision or management of a facility.
Yeah.
Which, yeah, requires a, a good bit of time, um.
Were you here last, last?
Contractual, whatever.
Is this something that we need for the new community centers that we're bringing online?
We'll need some sort of operational.
Some sort of.
Yeah, whether it's, whether it's total, just paying an entity to, to just do it, you know, we're hands-off other than the operation maintenance of, of the structure, um, or if it's, um, you know, an internal person who coordinates, you know, activities with organizations that provide, which, you know, Tru- Truitt is operating without any person being there and it's doing fine, we don't, we don't supervise anything in terms of activity. Newton, we could try that, I just, you know, suspect we're gonna need to be a little.
I, I would, I would highly.
So at this time to use, I'm sorry.
No, you got it.
At this time to use the facilities, I would have to say I have this activity that I'm willing to coordinate and the facility is there for me to do that. I'm comfortable with that model at this time.
And, and it's, just to be clear, um.
Meaning the, the existing building, the Truitt Street?
Yeah, so Newton, not online, yeah.
Well, that, it won't be in, but it will be in this fiscal year, it will be in September. Did anybody from the advisory committee give you any ideas on how to pay for this, or was this just simply?
Oh, yeah, oh, ci- ci- city, right?
Yeah.
I, I just want to.
I always get on the wrong ones.
If, if this is not looked at as something that is, is interested in funding, um, I, I would so highly recommend that through AmeriCorps or some sort of part-time entity, continue with some of the initiatives that Amber was doing.
I think we even need two AmeriCorps people or a, a position.
Which is already currently in the, in the mayor's budget and this was potentially an additive, but that oversight, if, to continue with that operation, it's either gonna fall out to Theo or to somebody in H T D D or somebody in the mayor to have to try to put all those pieces together, so the way we're operating right now, it doesn't leave room for growth or full investment into these activities, um, but we're getting by with kind of the AmeriCorps position.
And Andy, can I have one last thing? Uh, I'm talking about my last thing.
Yeah, I've got it there, eighty-six, less, eight, less eighty-six. That's my understanding.
Thirty-two seven? That's the additional force, thirty-two seven?
The, yes, yeah, the additional is thirty-two seven, the, with regards to Truitt, um, you know, one of the things that Amber had been looking into was, uh, operating things on Saturdays, um, but that, that's something that Amber was gonna be doing herself, she was gonna change her hours and be reaching out to individual vendors or whatever you want to call them, community groups, um, and they would, uh, apply through, uh, the application that Andy put together, um, but in order to do that, someone would have to be there to physically lock and unlock and supervise and all that kind of stuff, so right now, Truitt Street is only operating from three until, what?
Eight-thirty.
Eight-thirty, um, so, you know, it's, and I'm not saying that we aren't getting our monies with it, I don't, I don't want to specify that at all, but there, there could be additional stuff done if there was someone there that, for instance, could oversee stuff during the daytime or could oversee stuff on weekends, or at least Saturdays.
And what you said in time was, Theo?
For, uh, it's approximately.
Two programs, there's somebody doing after school and then there's a group who's doing evening programming right now, so they're back to back, so it's about a six-hour window.
So are they open on Mondays?
Monday to Friday right now.
Yeah, they are, I drive by, I, I, there's, there's.
You don't see as many vehicles, cause they get dropped off by bus, they get dropped off.
Oh, I do, yeah.
Yesterday, healthcare does the, the first one and they have, they haven't been taking.
Last night, yeah.
When?
I drove by it last night, there was a couple cars in the parking lot.
I didn't see any when I moved by there, I'm gonna tell you, I was wondering whether it was open.
That doesn't mean they're not in there, they, they won't miss it.
No, I'm not saying the kids, but I do know if they had some supervision, somebody has a car.
They, uh, they ride the bus, everyone rides the bus over and then they all.
The adults too?
Most of them do, yeah, yeah, the initial group, yeah, because someone has to be with the kids on the bus, if they tran- to transport it over, yeah. There's a couple of different models, we can go all through it if you have any questions.
All right, let me, let me see if I can, if I can summarize this, just cause I want to, from the dollar point of view. There are two AmeriCorps positions in the budget at sixteen thousand.
Associated with this.
Oh, no, 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 that's, the one AmeriCorps position associated with this and then one AmeriCorps position associated with this.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Now I understand, because what I was looking at was the. That's where the eighty-six hundred comes from, because when you, somebody was talking about two AmeriCorps.
So we, we have two right now, um, but we, we had proposed the youth development specialist position, which would replace one of those positions, so we went, so right now, the city as a whole has one and a half and next year, the city as a whole will have two, it's just our department will be going from one and a half to one.
Gotcha, so the way that we got thirty-two seven was we said, we're not gonna replace the Ameri- the, it's in the budget, but we're not gonna, we, we may not use it if we use.
Yes.
The youth specialist, so therefore it's thirty-two seven.
Yes.
Now, you know, I know Keith going and updating that thing, we're gonna have to make choices, obviously, because in my head, we don't have, we've exceeded our savings that we had, so we're gonna have to make choices in a couple of minutes. So, but I would put the thirty-two seven then on the sheet and then we can talk about as we go through it when we have figured out how we're gonna bu- balance this thing, uh, so that I'm, I'm, I'm correct, thirty-seven is correct up there. And it, and it eliminates, eliminates the one AmeriCorps position.
So, if we're going to the sheet, I don't know quite how to handle this, because at the same time, uh, we need a typo in the AmeriCorps position that our department has, because if you look right below that AmeriCorps mayor level adjustment, it, it was accidentally put in at sixty-five hundred, but it's supposed to be eighty-six hundred, cause we accidentally put in the amount for the part-time position.
So there's a shortage of twenty-one.
Yeah, we, we'll just let that self-crack that since, since we have the other number, we're just, we're good, you know, it all comes down, yeah.
All right. Getting scared, cause I think I understand it, so. All right, so then we go to four-fifty-seven plan? Is it X thing?
Four-fifty-seven, yeah.
We're done, right?
Who's gonna?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Do we need a, do we need Colonel?
Colonel's here.
No, I just, I told Colonel, Colonel was staying, I told him we, we had handled the safe streets and.
I just, you know. He's around. Cause you all wanted to round back to.
No, I think, I think we're fine.
Yeah, I meant, not both legislature, but really more about what the state is doing.
Oh.
I, I didn't know if they were.
Hardy, you have any question, any questions? Thanks, guys, appreciate it very much. As long as you don't talk.
You're trouble, Theo.
My curiosity, you know, what's the, what, what, what's going on, we keep going with safe streets, we're changing the name, what are they doing?
I told you, it's an election year.
Well, this has been transitioning from the wild to the state, um, governor's offices is moving away from safe streets to Emsen, which is Maryland Intelligence, uh, Criminal Intelligence Network, it's a lot of similarities between that and safe streets. Uh, the difference, the focus is that it is, with safe streets, you had a top twenty-five adult list that was, there was criteria for an individual to get put on that list, uh, almost like a watch list for criminal activity, they were a criminal, there was also twenty-five juvenile lists, same, same thing, so Emsen does away with that per se and they focus more on, uh, criminal networks, so you may have one or two individuals that are involved with cross-tier jurisdictional crimes, so in other words, and we all know that crime doesn't, is just not here in Salisbury, a lot of the crime we have stems outside the city, comes into Salisbury, so what they're focusing in and on is the network of crime and how, how we can affect, how we might do something in the Cambridge area or the eastern area, but it's, it's related to what's going on here in Salisbury, so it's, it's more of a, more of a web, you know, which is really with the, with the officers we have assigned to, uh, the gang unit now, uh, the Wintif, uh, task force, a lot of this stuff they're doing now anyway, they're doing, they're doing anyway, so what we're doing is we're shifting focus on those type of units and the overtime money that we get will be in direct support of those, those type of units, so we may have some patrol officers that are doing an operation in support of Wintif or in support of the gang unit and so forth, so they're going after really the criminal network, so they're trying to, really the words they're using is dismantle, disrupt criminal activity as it stems outside the city. So we have to, where, where safe streets was primarily the entire city, a little bit of Fruitland, a little bit of Delmar, this really, there's really no battery in this, this really stems outside, wherever you can tie in criminal activity as it relates to what's going on in Salisbury or the surrounding area, that's really the main difference, but a lot of the components, as far as what's, uh, the money's getting spent on, as far as salary positions, um, it's, it's basically the same, but the addition this year of what we put in for is the crime intel analysts, uh, we feel like they're, based on the work that's gonna have to get done in, in as far as the criminal network goes, that there is gonna be a need for, for that position there. Uh, and we looked at the, uh, the, um, the coordinator to be more of an outreach person, to try not only focusing on, uh, bringing the partners together that are, you know, to make the grant work, but also community outreach, maybe community work involved and, and activities and trying to, you know, reduce crime, help us, help us, so, uh, that's, that's what we call that, there would be work there, plenty of work. We also put in for some equipment, um, the state was non-specific on how much money, that usually with safe streets, they say, here's how much money you're getting to make it work, you know, and we have to maybe make some hard decisions, we're going to do, they're not putting a dollar figure on this, they're basically saying, tell us what you think is gonna work and then we'll see how much money we have that we can, we can get to make it work, so. We put in for some equipment, um, for some additional tag readers, uh, L P R, we put in for some video, uh, surveillance cameras to assist Wintif and so on. Whether we get it or not, don't know, uh, the issue is gonna come down to dollars and cents, they did invite, uh, this was, this grant was invite-only, so, um, we were obviously invited and they added, uh, three or four other invites, so I don't know how much money the state has to, how they're gonna do that on, so. Everybody's submitting a proposal, ours may look totally different than, say, PG County is submitting, ours may be completely different based on what we think our, our needs are compared to what, you know, they might, so, I think they're gonna, the feeling I get is they're gonna evaluate these and pick the best, uh, what they think is the best of, of each and then they may fund that, so we'll see, but. We've, we've been very successful getting funding so far and this has been since two thousand nine with Safe Streets, so. I'm surprised, um, that they, when they did, um, as, as Councilman Artin pointed out, generally speaking, when you get a new governor, they usually change that right away, they usually make a change right away, prior to Safe Streets, we had Wheat and Seed and before that, this, um, a few other, you know, the names change, I think Safe Streets was the most comprehensive, did the most, uh, work and there were some more partners involved. This is what the state is really saying, it's just taking it to another level, uh, changing it somewhat again to, to more of a, more of a, if, if you look at it this way, you're just doing away with the boundaries and you're just looking how, how do you.
How it actually works.
I'll give you an idea, there are a lot of people who are wanted because they violate a probation but live in Delaware, because it's only seven miles up the road, and we never, prior to two thousand and eleven, spoke to anybody who lived outside a jurisdiction. So there were a lot of, during Safe Streets meeting where people, people from Delaware State Police were looking at this list of people who were wanted or who were, and they were like, oh, we just had a meeting with the Camden Delaware Police, this person is in custody in Camden right now, like, right there on that day. And, you know, you were able to, to find out that lines and the road mean nothing to people who are, who are trying to not be found. So talking to the other jurisdictions was incredibly important, even these, for Virginia, there was a couple we found.
We did really reach for the starters on this grant, I think the total dollar figure on it's over six hundred thousand, uh, between the equipment and the positions and, um, we built in a reentry piece for, uh, ECI, with the, where Poplar Bill, when they closed down ECI, assumed, um, the, the pre-release. And what that really amounted to is, is training, they were doing some, uh, I'll name a few, was, uh, lager training was big for the, uh, construction companies that, that was big, they were hiring, uh, we were providing the training for those folks, I think the, for several years, the council, mayor and council submitted a budget that included some funding, uh, which, which had to be cut for budgetary reasons, but we built that back in to see if that, if that's something that they might, they didn't tell us no, so we kind of, so we're submitting it and see, you know, we're kind of just waiting to see how that's gonna work, um, the health department's getting some funding, again, for peer support specialist, which is basically tying into your opioid addiction and it's more of a peer counselor, appeal, uh, where they work directly with the addicts and the families of the addicts to work through issues, family counseling and so forth, that is, that has also been in the Safe Streets grant, so we built that back into the, uh, Emsen, we feel like that's been a path that. So we, uh, this isn't just enforcement, there are some pieces dealing with addiction, dealing with some, um, dealing with some reentry of, of, of the folks that are getting released from ECI and so forth, so, like I said, they didn't tell us no, so we're building it in and we'll just see where this thing, we'll know in a few weeks where, where it flushes out.
Okay, anything else for the crowd? Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Have a good day. Okay, moving on, anybody need a break? Yes? Yes, we have, we have a need for a break, five minutes is coming.
So, um, the four-fifty-seven plan, Keith, you, you did a worksheet on that, right?
I guess.
Um, last year, we had, uh, heard from many of the personnel committees and this is something that, that we've talked about up here, um, is increasing either the match or the, or the percentage that we contribute to, um, for the four-fifty-seven, understanding that this is gonna be with them hopefully for the rest of their life, this is, um, an important benefit that we believe employees should be taking advantage of, um, so maybe Keith, you could run us through some of the numbers that you played with?
Okay, so currently, uh, we have a four percent.
Keith, you gotta make that larger some.
Yeah, absolutely, let me see if I can do that, I don't know, let's see, now let's try it, let's try. This, of course, this didn't get any bigger, zoom, yeah, and let me go two hundred, and I should do it. Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I can see that, I can see clearly now.
I collapse that maybe and then I'll be done, let's see if you, uh, so anyway, at, at four percent max, uh, currently, we, uh, we match at twenty-five percent, um, so to increase that to, uh, to, to fifty percent, it would cost us thirty-five thousand dollars, to go to, uh, seventy-five, it would cost us sixty-two thousand and, uh, to, to one, it would be eighty-one point three, now, to, to look at the, the same thing, but increasing the five, four to five percent, the same numbers, um, at, at, uh, to go to fifty percent, it would be thirty-nine instead of thirty-five and at seventy-five, it would be sixty-nine, and at one, it would be ninety-four. Sorry.
Was this, and this is just a question, did we know about them asking for this before your budget was put together?
Uh.
They requested it last year.
We did and, uh, and honestly, we, I, I forgot to, to bring it up and include it, um, and, you know, we, we offer a, a strong benefits package already, um, but this is something else that could make us more competitive, um, but it's, you know.
We don't have a recruitment retention issue, gentlemen.
I was gonna say, is there a turnover?
No, it's, it's just a matter of, you know, it's a benefit that they've been asking for, it's, yeah, there are other benefits.
Do we have to just please bring it forward?
Yeah, it's, yeah, I think.
But also, I mean, if.
We can afford to.
It's worth the conversation, yeah.
If we have a tougher year in the future, you know, we're able to make bigger conversations, we could submit that in that year, cause it's a smaller increase, you know, to offset other issues.
Has it been one year or two years since we did the annual?
We're going into our fourth year. Or our fourth year of raises.
Has it, is that a four year?
Yeah.
So the raises that we agreed to are plugged into this budget as well?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I mean, if there's a year where we, you know, for some reason we don't do that, maybe this is something we're upset with.
I'm great healthcare.
I'm not worried about that. This don't work like this for other employees.
No, I'm great healthcare. Oh, I was just agreeing with uh Mr. Higginson there.
It's pretty good.
Yeah. We know we can't do everything, but.
As soon as we get about three lines down, we're gonna know, we're really gonna know how we can't do everything.
Yeah.
Can we reserve this question till that time?
Yeah, I just wait for the hour. So we we have, we have the dollar value on this, I wouldn't, do we have anything in there yet?
No, no.
Don't put anything in there.
No, nothing's in there.
Let's go to the.
Yeah. You had, the other thing, you had said you wanted to revisit, I don't know if you still want to.
I've already, no.
No. So you want to ride down to the bottom?
Yeah, let's go right to the bottom.
All right, we're at, the total adjustments that have occurred at the council level, we reduced the revenues, um you might remember last time we found out that the, um based on the stipends and that the uh that the the volunteers were not gonna be able to make um the full amount of the um uh lease payment, so we had to reduce that by fifty-three. So that's what this.
So we're picking it up and still getting the truck?
Well, we committed to to the payment, so we'll have to make up the difference, yeah. Then, uh the total of the expenditures, uh the 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 total adjustments that we made, a total sixty-one thousand dollar reduction, thus the net difference is an is a uh an increase or a reduction of the use of surplus of seven, seventy-eight hundred, so the sur- the use of surplus now budgeted is one seventy-two, one point seventy-two million.
In order to have it balanced?
Yeah, in order to have it balanced, we were targeting, we we thought a reasonable target was one seven, so uh we're eighty-two thousand off that.
And how much is, are we allowed?
Uh well, our policy says, and we've says, well, our policy for the uh use of surplus is one percent of the general fund budget.
Okay, and not being able to do that in my head, how much is?
Well, uh that would be about, uh max is only four hundred and seven thousand, but we've been deviating from that every year because our spending variance has been averaging, uh so that this, uh between one-six and one-seven.
Some years we don't even use, we put money back in.
So we felt comfortable with this as a target.
Sorry, that's from the police department.
Generally speaking, so so we, um to give you a sense of where we've been, last year, we used about two point two million dollars in surplus, and the year before that, about two million dollars in surplus. And we tried to dial it down based on um the council president's guidance, um that uh we need to get back to the one-six to one-eight range, where we know we're going to put up at least that much money back at the end of the year.
Is there any suggestions from you all about if we wanted to do everything up top? What, is there other places, other projects or other things that could be cut to save those things?
Well, I mean, again, knowing that we've reduced the size of the general fund budget already, I I would say we're not looking at a situation where you would need to make an adjustment, I think the adjustment up there is a still within a very, very reasonable figure, uh and meets the kind of direction that we've gotten from last year in terms of where we'd like the the uh general fund surplus to go, um so I, I mean. If the, I think there's still a couple of things that you can do, one, we could do the AmeriCorps instead of a staff or, you know, um that's.
I just, you know, sixty million, fifty million dollar budget, that this is, if the accessible base went up, I see that your use of surplus went down, it just.
And other revenues went down as well, and some revenues went up.
Well, what about projects, I mean?
What about?
I I don't know, I'm I'm nobody's.
We're spending less this year, we tightened up on operations significantly.
I understand that, I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about larger projects, things that are
CIP, how many?
You know, stuff that saving in in bond proceeds, I mean, if we, if we, I mean, really, you can't do anything with this except really the fire department, cause you're already on the hook. Which is entirely unfair, but that's a whole nother.
Far as our situation.
What do we, Mr. Council President, what are we trying to find here, how much money are we trying to find?
Eighty-two thousand.
Just eighty-two thousand?
If you if you even need to find eighty-two thousand.
We're trying to find eighty-two.
No, I don't think.
I think it's close enough.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm trying, give me one second, let me just.
So we went through that whole, we went along the page and we told we don't need to do anything?
Why don't I go for it?
Uh one seventy-two here. So when we looked at that.
I couldn't, I couldn't go with that number, we've been putting.
Is still the surplus, you know, between a hundred and two hundred.
Trying to get to four or five.
You know, not, you know, it's just against the. Three hundred and two.
Yeah.
We shouldn't be a user.
So we're there in three months.
Well.
It has to be a little bit there in three months.
Yeah, well, we're, there are, those two are disconnected, the three months is how much we should have in our unassigned surplus.
Unassigned surplus.
So that that having to do with where.
What do, what is that, what is that number?
Uh that number's short, remember that was, that involved is like six, six, six-eight, and we're tar- we're targeting, you know, more like like a financial health, seven, something.
Seven-three.
Yes, somewhere from there, so we got, it's, we went, I kinda get there in one year.
No, I know, I know.
Yeah, yeah, no, I was just making that clear.
No, no, I know that.
Yeah, just to make a small payment.
Yeah, this is not. And that's got everything that we talked about except four, five, seven.
Exactly, yes, yep, it's all in there.
And that in, does that include the savings on the one seventy-three on the PPO, TPO?
It does, uh what we had to do, we had to pur- purrate that from one thirty-nine.
Because of September, because of September.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, and it's got the youth specialist, it's got the Safe Streets, it's got the AmeriCorps typo. And so.
So really, the big piece was the the PPO, EPA, cause that's the hundred and four thousand dollars, if that didn't happen, changes the number a lot.
Yeah, then it jumps up.
Then it would jump, then it would.
Then it would jump up significantly.
Right.
Then you're looking at moving some numbers.
Keith, how close did you come last year to the real number? I know you know.
Uh we're not done, we're not done with.
No, I mean, last, oh, well, that's true, you're not done yet.
Done with eight.
All right, go back, go back, you're behind that, I mean, it's eighty-two, you're you're about.
Well, we we go to our famous story we made in New York when we said, we we value the use of surplus and we we said over eight years, we had only a use of two hundred thousand, so it's pretty fantastic over that, you know, figure fifty, thirty-some million a year, and we had only used two hundred thousand, the very next year, we put in two hundred, so we went to zero over nine years. So it's pretty, pretty significant that this, the city's done a great job with the the council and everyone in making sure we don't get uh too far from our objective, which is not to use surplus.
Oh, my gosh, I never told you any of this.
But until the radio happened, to fairness, until the radio happened, and when the radio happened, this year, we're gonna we're, and we saw it on the balance sheet last year, uh we're gonna see it in our financial statement, in the statement of changes this year, where we, where we, where where the fire truck is gonna cause us to go into like a use of a very large amount this year.
Is that something that you could tell Barb, Keen Thornton, before they come, so that I don't necessarily have to?
Well, they they knew last year, that's why, that's why we heard the speech, is is uh, and it was mainly the radio, the the fi- the fire truck's getting credit, cause it didn't come on time, but it was, it was the radio system that we had to dig in and use seven to eight hundred thousand dollars of our surplus to make that happen, and and that was great, cause we avoided debt, but it's put pressure on our reserves.
Yeah.
Well, then, do you want that one point seven to come down even further? Should we be looking?
One, one and ten are two, you know, uh you know, so we were targeting one-seven, we thought it was reasonable, and it, we we expect that when we opened with the financial health uh presentation, we suggested that that might put somewhere between a hundred and two hundred uh thousand into surplus, so it's it's a small payment, but we could make it up over time. Obviously, we took out eight hundred, it's gonna, you can't put it all back in one year. You know, so.
I'm just being a little uncomfortable, we've gotten to the bottom of the page and there's nothing to do.
Well, it.
I mean, that's what I thought we were avoiding all morning.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's not as bad as I thought it was gonna be.
It's the EPO, PPO piece is, is the big kind of question, if you look at the only adjustments that we made, right there, you've got plus thirty, plus thirty-two, plus two thousand.
If we didn't have.
Then you're looking at.
If we didn't have this.
We'd still be at work, yeah.
Yeah, we'd still be working.
But we also put raises in there as well.
That's all in there.
I I understand that, is, and is this a big enough difference down at the bottom for us to reopen?
My mind, no. Because we hit our target. This, well, let me, let me look the other way. Or is there something that you're not comfortable with that's on that, that was on that list?
If there is, then let's talk about it.
No, it's not anything that's on that particular list, it's just, our list every year is seven things in a sixty million dollar budget, and that that is historically what the council has done, is has has gone down into the minutia.
Well, yeah, but I can remember, I can remember sitting here for an hour and a half for eight hundred dollars.
Oh, yeah, me too.
I'm not going back there.
No, I understand that, I just.
Yeah, that's bizarre.
Well, I, in the larger ticket projects that are out there that are adding money to the bonded debt, I have some concerns about spending money on those things while raising changing employee insurance, raising water and sewer rates, cause it's not just a water rate, it's a water and sewer rate, correct? Uh it just.
But they're different.
It just, it 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 seems as if, and this is nobody's fault, but the good news gets to come from the people who introduce the budget, the bad news gets to come from the city council. And I'm not saying that that isn't just the way it happens, but it does become a little tiresome. But if my colleagues are good with this, I'm good with this.
But but we all, I mean, in all, in I mean, we have other things that we need, we haven't tackled that we need to tackle, we are still underwater with trash uh pickup. And we heard the other night how ridiculous our cost was, however, if you look at the true and actual cost to dealer.
Like the commercial.
All right, we're about thirty, last time I heard was thirty dollars, somewhere around, thirty-six dollars off, so we're we're footing the bill.
No, no, I'm sorry, twenty-one percent, we're not, we're not recovering twenty-one percent of our total costs.
Okay, so that.
That's.
Hold on, put it in there, let that percolate.
I was just giving a different, a different, uh that that.
We're paying sixty-seven dollars.
Um the rate, well, the rate, I think the rate, um so we have a little presentation on that, if you wanted to revisit that.
No, I just, I'm just pointing it out that we have a, we have another thing we haven't tackled yet, that people are gonna think we're crazy, but our cost is different.
But what I'm getting at in the public is, is you're building these big ticket items over on this side while telling us that this stuff, and I say, well, the stuff isn't paying for itself, whether or not we're building bike lanes and paths and amphitheaters is regardless of the fact that you're not paying enough trash. That's what I say, but that doesn't necessarily, I know I'm not sure if that message gets through.
No, no, yeah, I I hear you, well, the only.
Amphitheater was grant money.
I it it, I understand that, and I s- and I say that.
No, I under, yeah, I mean, it's.
Is it, so there, is there any, because without any expansion of the tax base, except the small increments that happen just as a natural occurrence over time, the larger picture, and this is what I don't understand, I understand the little pictures as they're presented to us, but the larger picture, the change in connection fees, the reduction of connection fees to zero, and that netting, I I just, if we're looking over the long-term financial of 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 what we're doing, I don't know whether or not and I'm not saying I didn't do this, I'm saying in some particular points I did, just hoping it comes out. You know, hoping upon hope that that Barbie King Thornton doesn't come in and say, general, GFO says this can't go there anymore, or Blue Cross Blue Shield shows up and says, ah, now you got two people using prescriptions. It's very difficult to say to employees, we're doing these things over here, but you are still what was, you know, in the end, we get to say the raise was this and your insurance was this, and we hope it, the EPO, PPO discussion will be very helpful saying to them how much they can save.
Uh yeah, it's different buckets, but they see it as city, all of it.
I I I do as well, I know I shouldn't, but I do.
No, but I mean, I I can understand the argument.
Yeah, and you're always gonna have certain people who are gonna.
Well, I mean, I can deal with 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 what's his name from Middle Boulevard, not a problem, cause we were in the, you know, and he was like, are we building a bronze statue for all these things? And I said, you know what, they said the exact same thing about me three years after I became mayor, and we, and I looked at him, I said, and we said the exact same thing about the mayor before us, and we both threw our head back and laughed because that's true, because everybody's only seeing it in their particular microcosm at the time.
Yep. What does everybody think? So so. So let's do, let me do, let me ask one thing. Keith, would you, for the benefit of the people at home that don't have the sheets and may not be able to see the sheet, summarize that, this little box, go to the bottom. What, describe this to as best you can, those this, these numbers right here, would you do that?
Uh we left the mayor's level with a uh use of surplus of one million, seven hundred and ninety thousand, that uh was very close to our target of one point seven million, so we thought that was sufficient. All of the adjustments that we made at the council level total, reducing that use of surplus by seven thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars, so we've arrived to a use of surplus of one million, seven hundred and eighty-two thousand, which is an improvement over the mayor level and uh well within our target at one point seven.
And the eighty-two, eight, eight?
That that would be if we hit the target on the next.
And that is good or bad?
Well, we were basically short of our target.
We're short of the target by eighty-two thousand.
Right. But we've improved, we were short of the target by ninety at the mayor level. So you've come closer to the target as a council by reaching eighty-two.
And that was as a result of the?
Combination.
Combination PPO.
Yeah, yeah, the main cut was the PPO that funded then uh the uh uh youth specialist position and the the Safe Street, we call it Safe Street, you heard a new new name, we haven't quite uh adopted yet, but it's the Grant Match Program for thirty thousand, seven sixteen, so.
So we could conceivably reduce that to fifty thousand if we did take out, and I'm not saying it can't come from somewhere else, these are the only options that are on the table right now.
The the thing.
New money.
New money.
Yeah, if you.
So we could reduce it as low as twenty thousand.
You could, you could reduce it, if you took everything out.
Because we can't take out the lease on the truck. That's correct, but that's, yeah, that.
So the the items are, um the Safe Streets, youth specialist. We could bring it down to thirty if we didn't do.
Youth specialist?
Safe Streets and Youth Specialists, but then we've got a community center sitting there.
But the AmeriCorps people would be.
Yeah, you still have the, you still have the eighty-six hundred for that AmeriCorps person who could operate as we are doing currently.
My my concern is, we we approved that specialist this year, but it then becomes a position that keeps growing and growing and growing and growing, because we're giving this person raises, and then. Raises and then we're giving this person every time we want to adjust, you know, it it's it's a small increment, but it's something that. Compounding, you know, I would be more comfortable if that were a contract position, if we're a part-time position, and we weren't offering all these things. I don't think we need to offer all those things with it. If we're a position that could more easily be dissolved if we find that it's not effective.
You won't find that it's not effective after it comes on. I'll meet a sound like that, but very seldom does anything come on that and.
But this is my concern and and then.
Well, I I think the, I think also if we if we go back a couple of years when we, you know. This particular, the community centers is during a series of conversations, of meetings that had hundreds of city residents in them. This is what they requested. They requested community centers and they expect us to to facilitate them. That, this is something that clearly came from the community. I went to all of those meetings. Uh, and so, and this was the direction that that we decided to go on a couple of years ago. And the the purpose of it, we had clear things going on in our community at the time.
Right.
And this was, this was part of the answer to address this stuff long term. So the idea is to, do we invest in our community? Do we, do we invest in with the direction of what the people who elected me, this is what they requested. This is what they asked.
But the council voted, let's find someplace else in the budget to fund it, because there's, there's five, six things on this list. There is another forty million dollars worth of budget out there. And these, these are things that not necessarily that we came up with. So I, do you think you could find thirty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars in all the other parts of this budget? I think you could find it if you wanted to get, if you wanted to go look for it. I mean, at this particular point, we have basically.
Well, actually, we came up with a youth specialist position simply because if I'm not mistaken, we wanted to keep Amber. Am I right or am I wrong from the last meeting we had?
Uh, I think that was a piece of the original conversation.
And that's when I I remember I was on the phone, we were discussing and I was asking about what sort of information will come in.
Do we actually need to use specialists now or can we just work with AmeriCorps?
I think, I think we can, I think we will be fine with an AmeriCorps employee. Getting this up and running, this will be the first year that Newton comes on board. Um, we can take it slow with programming that, see how it goes, revisit it next year. If there is a need, we'll have some sort of data to prove that. But I mean, certainly we could hit the ground faster with one, but you know, we, if we need to make decisions.
But if we take the AmeriCorps position and we narrow the focus onto what we wanted to do instead of.
Yep.
So there's a couple, couple of, because I did this for years. You've got an AmeriCorps position as someone who chooses to do a paid internship, that's basically what an AmeriCorps is. They are choosing to do that, you're gonna get whoever's interested in that style versus a active recruitment for somebody who may have a degree or or is interested in this. Even at thirty-two thousand dollars, it's still gonna be a stepping to another direction. So retention of somebody who's gonna be in that position, you don't get that through AmeriCorps because it's it's a one-year service period, maybe two if you're lucky. Um, and then this could just be a stepping soon, so you're gonna have turnover in that position regardless. Um, with this, you're gonna get a higher level candidate than someone who is an AmeriCorps position, because they're still trying to figure things out, they may not have the experience already. But on paper, an AmeriCorps, full-time AmeriCorps person's doing thirty-five hours a week, that's what they're committed to, so hours for hours, you're gonna have. About the same amount of level of input, you just may have to do a little bit more, um, management of that position.
Could we increase the AmeriCorps funding just a little?
It's it's a, it's a, it's already targeted, you don't, um, they cover half, we cover half, so there is no.
Oh, so they're making like seventeen?
Uh, yeah, the AmeriCorps grant actually funds the other half of their salary.
Okay, so now with with Amber being a an AmeriCorps. Employee, and she did such a marvelous job, why do we think that some other youth from?
No, I I do have high confidence that we can find someone that that would do the job. We've had high success with our AmeriCorps.
And we have to try, and and what I'm saying is, we have to train these young people for these positions, so this is a training. For them, you know, I mean, if we want them to go into leadership positions, this is where they start.
The the good news is this is like a paid intern.
Yeah.
It's a paid internship.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
If you like the person, you hire the person and then you only.
Yeah, but the person we were gonna hire has gotten another position.
And and like you said, um, Mr. President, you. You don't create a position for the person, you create a position based off of the need, and I'm a big advocate of that, because you, they're gonna make the decisions based off of their own interest. So we need to figure out what is necessary. This position would greatly su- subsidize what we're currently doing and improve our ability to reach the youth population in these different community outreach activities. However, we can still piece it together with what we currently have, because we've been doing it the past year or so.
I haven't heard anything quantifiable to say that these things are actually being, am I the only person that hasn't heard anything to say that these things we're discussing are actually being achieved? I haven't heard anything that would indicate that these goals are actually being achieved.
Well, yeah.
Which goals?
Whatever the goals might be, that's another issue.
Oh, the metrics?
Yeah, the metrics, I'm not, I'm not seeing or hearing, I heard there was a bus stop thing, there was an event where you had ten young people attend a city hall, you know. Because I'm all for the warm and fuzzy things, but then they're very difficult to measure how effective we're actually being. And I'm not saying don't do it, could we take a step back and not make it a full-time job? Can we just leave it as?
I think you're, I think you're hearing that from us, that that we're okay with the AmeriCorps.
So we're saying is go back, what, it sounds like what the consensus is, is to get an AmeriCorps.
Yeah, I think, I think the best, the best.
Yeah.
To continue, yes, to continue.
It's a paid intern, look at, continue where we are and then evaluate it again.
Revisit.
Yeah, revisit it.
We can evaluate those metrics, firm them up, we'll have two community centers online, we'll have a better idea next year of what we need.
Because we're.
Could you apply for a third AmeriCorps person?
The full-time positions, there's only so many, um, they won't give, they won't give a lot to one site because they wanna spread those out. So the likelihood of us getting three is.
Why, if you have people who are willing to volunteer and a need.
There's only so many numbers of.
I got you, I understand.
And and to, and to go back to what you said, Jim, about, there's gotta be. When we started this process, when we came in, once we got the budget, I had thirty-nine items to tot- totaled over. Six million dollars worth of things that I questioned, and I got answers on, well, you've got, I I got answers on all those those questions. So I feel comfortable enough based on the number of questions that I had, that I don't think there's much skinny. And the other thing that that I say, based on history, if you look at where we were when I first came on the council. The numbers going into surplus, if you remember, were humongous. The departments putting four hundred to six hundred thousand dollars into surplus, am I correct?
Well, is it that salary savings for the most part?
No, not.
Well, it is from the police department.
Well, yeah, but there's other, there were other departments that were contributing as well, but if you look at those, th- those days are gone, you really don't see that much going back. The, that num, that big number anymore. You see surplus going back, but you don't see the huge numbers, so. I I'm comfortable with it, but, um. I mean, they've got a, the mayor and the. Executive branch gotta come up with, if they have, I'm sure they wouldn't excessively pay up the budget. Especially based on the questions that I asked, and everybody had a certain, uh.
Yeah, I mean, you, you wouldn't be smart if you don't build a contingency into your budget, not understanding how the fluctuation of certain things are, but then there is truly padding the budget where you're just hiding money. Um, and I don't think we, I mean, we went through with our operations and we asked our departments to f- to find some money and kind of tr- trim out some of the fat already so that we could. Make the mayor's budget work if we wanted to invest in some new projects, so I think we've gone through a pretty good exercise.
Yeah, we we went through everybody's budget and just so you know what, I mean, we cut deeply and then we asked them to do a six percent cut of operating and then we went back and cut more. They, it was, um, so we we have been in, um, but that, you know. Still have.
To be perfectly honest with you, Mr. Council President, for thirty-two thousand dollars, I'm not gonna say take it in a sixty million dollar budget, just put it in there. I mean, my my concern is more of a broader, larger picture of the departments are getting cut, insurance is going up, but there's a bunch of projects that are over here in this. In this bonded indebtedness.
You wanna review the CIP?
Uh, no, I'm ju, I'm I'm saying that. From an outsider's perspective, it looks like there's all this going on, but what's actually happening is that stuff's getting cut, departments are getting cut, insurance is going up. And I I just. I'm not sure, sometimes I look at it and think it's putting lipstick on a pig, and sometimes I think, wow, that might be the best way to do that, and then twenty minutes later I go, I think it's putting lipstick on a pig. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna take a youth specialist with all those things out of this, out of a sixty million dollar budget for thirty-seven thousand dollars, it's not gonna do it. I mean, that's just, that's just nitpicking, the idea that, again, that there's only six things on there is.
Do you, do you have any specific items?
Well, I could go back to a whole lot of them, but that that opens up, that that that's a, that's more of a, of a stylistic and. Values call, and I'm not, I'm not gonna do that to my mayor and I'm not gonna do that to you all.
Yeah, okay. No, we're we're talking about.
Stylistic, just differences.
Yeah. All right, is everyone, where are we? Because I'm, now I'm confused.
So am I.
I thought we had a consensus, but. You okay?
I'm fine.
You okay? You okay?
I'm okay with, there Jim?
Yeah.
Are we keeping it or are we cutting?
Keeping it. I'm saying, are you okay to keep it? Okay. You're okay? No, you're not, you're partying? Or no? I thought you said yes, that's why I went down though.
Because it is a smaller amount, but it does migrate our issue. We're gonna continue to add on personnel, 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 and it seems like a small thing, but it.
I was in the room just a few minutes.
You know what I mean, it's just like that.
If they, they already said they're cool with it.
Yeah.
Well, they would take, with going back to the AmeriCorps.
Or, you know, when I was in the room a few minutes ago, I heard you say.
So we're going back to.
I heard you both say, uh, the idea of it being a contract position that it was easier to eliminate. Are we not okay with that?
I'm fine with that. What I'm saying is I would rather, uh, and this is just where I believe that I can have an impact, a conservative approach to growing our 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 staff. That's what I'm saying, a conservative approach to growing staff. If this is the first time that we see it happen, but that's typically what I'll come down on, I would like to see a more conservative path to growing our staff.
Well, we get the same position as the contract.
I mean, yeah, we all would, but that doesn't mean it happens.
But this is an opportunity to to see how it works and.
So.
This is a way to do it.
So if we, so are you comfortable with a contract?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
April, you look confused.
I am confused.
Yeah, I I think what April's saying is if you can do it with AmeriCorps, you should do it with AmeriCorps, but AmeriCorps is not somebody who works for the city. Who, when you look at that, that job description, all that's going on there.
It's a lot.
That's a lot of stuff going on, that's a lot, and and what we want is what people told us at those meetings. I want those buildings open after school. I want those, I I need that at a time where the police chief says this is, this is where these things are happening in the neighborhood. This is where scurrilousness and frivolity take over, this is where, this is where we want people. If we were doing that and not all this other stuff that's in there, which I believe is all Theo's job, all of it's Theo's job, except the keeping of these things open. But I don't want to hire somebody so that it frees up. These people, when I think, A, they're doing a pretty good job of doing it. And it does seem like it's like the catch-all, well, that's all the craziness, let's all, let's all put that into one position, but. Rage.
My my thing was the youth specialist. That wasn't there, was it last week, week before last, we had the budget meeting?
We discussed it in the last.
That's what I'm saying, it was being discussed.
They were gonna go back and and put together some stuff and then.
And we were doing this for what reason?
I think one of the things is when that.
Huh?
Doing what?
We were, we were discussing a youth specialist because of what reason? We were discussing a, um, youth specialist because Amber.
No.
We're using Amber as an example.
Amber as an example, and we were, we were talking about hiring her.
That that did seem like the thrust of the conversation.
I can go back further though.
As as for that position, well, you can probably go back further, but I would probably give when you go back further.
No, I, no, but if we go back a little further, these, um, staff asked for that in the budget, we denied it.
Okay.
Because we were trying to tighten things up.
And that's what I'm trying.
We cut it, and in the meantime, we've learned that Amber's gonna be moving on.
Yeah.
Um, you know, yes, she would likely be the person who would be offered the job.
Yes.
Um, you know, were she to still want it, but that's not the case. So, um, so I think the question is, just what, how can we achieve the things that we wanna achieve with respect to youth development programming? Maybe there are three ways, AmeriCorps, contract, or full, uh, position. I suspect it's probably only the contractual and the full position that could actually do all the things they want. You know, I I would, you know, I would say that, let's remember that Theo's former position, um, you know, doesn't exist, we moved him out of it. Into the housing homelessness position, um, so I'd say it's. The contractual or the, um, or the full, and if we did the AmeriCorps only, then I'd say we just have to tighten up our expectations about what they're gonna produce.
But I I I think that the consensus sounds like we wanna get, we we need the full, we need to get as much as we possibly can. The concern, however, is an ongoing basis, can we evaluate, since it's a brand-new position, I like the idea of contract. Because then you can evaluate either the success or failure, and then if it becomes, you know, this is the right thing to do. And then we can go ahead and make it a full-time position and then fund it. So that would be my, did I catch everybody's sort of concern?
Yeah.
Now, you you're shaking, you sort of.
Oh, yeah, I mean, it it, I I think that's maybe a good approach as far as maybe determining. Metrics on the position and what we can achieve.
I I think it's gonna be, when you do a contract position, you're looking at just not picking up their their benefits package, basically. You're gonna get somebody who either, A, is not worried about it, or B, is on a different plan or something. It is going to be a different caliber applicant than if it's an AmeriCorps person, so you would have a closer validation of what you could do with that position. And then decide, oh, we wanna keep this on, we'll add the benefits package in the future or or go away. I don't think you're gonna get a true account through an AmeriCorps position of what is capable of a full-time position just because of the nature of that position.
And I I think personally, as good as the AmeriCorps person would be, even if it was Amber, and she was still. I'm not sure that, based on that description that we saw, I mean, that's a pretty hefty handful. Uh, and maybe, and maybe we'll find out during this process that it, that's too much. You know, or you need another level or something, but I I like the idea of being able to do a contract position, which is. A year-to-year position until we become comfortable enough with the direction we're gonna go in. So if we can make that recommendation, then I think we can proceed.
I'll go for it.
Okay, okay. All right. I think. Is there anything else that we forgot? Certainly hope not. Anything else? Here?
What was the one thing we were talking about that we hadn't?
Four fifty-seven, we dropped that.
No, there was something else.
We had the fire for personnel.
The fire.
Grant match or safe streets?
There's a lot, there's a lot of money in that. Yeah, so it was the same.
Orders, the rates, the healthcare rates, police, safe streets, and grant match.
Oh, the the trash.
That thirty thousand may or may not be.
Oh, no, no, I wasn't bringing that up.
That's only if we get the grant, so they're still, that's still may or may not happen.
That'd be too much, but I'm just pointing out that there's always been money. People think that, you know, we're just charging them for stuff, and here we are with this Delta. Okay, that will, uh, pretty much wrap it up. I wanna thank publicly, uh, the mayor and the staff, especially Keith. Uh, thank the council members for their time. Again, um, it's gotten smoother every year. Uh, we're spending more time talking about the issues and reading the stuff, which I think is the way it's designed. So, uh, with that. Good to go. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.